Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. Oh, wait. It's not July 26th. Six. Hello. Yes, the Select Board meeting of September 22 at 6:30. And I would like to call me in order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda, please?
Someone.
That can buy Mr. Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is the members. Oops, you're right, we're gonna vote.
We're gonna vote all the way. Yep, Mr. Yami.
Yep, I forgot, you're holding, you just told me two minutes ago. Boris Kern is joining us remotely this evening.
How are you?
Hello, Ray.
Sorry, we will vote all.
So.
Yep, we'll be doing roll call votes for all of our votes this evening.
Mr. Benali.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Ms. Conley. Yes, Ms. Kim.
Yes.
And it's five to zero. Great. Before we begin, as we do every meeting, I want to read this statement that we like to make. The Situate Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during our meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We guide the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Okay. Now, do we have any walkings this evening? Seeing none, we'll jump right over to the Town Administration's report. Jim?
Evening, welcome to the temp hours, everybody, tonight. We'll start with our COVID numbers. The Mavon number was 20, which was up from last week's 12. This was going up for two straight weeks, now it's back up. Our positivity rating over the last 14 days was 7.73%. That's down from 19.55% of last week. Close guys at 8.39, up to 8.34. Statewide for past seven days was 7.61, down slightly from last week's 7.84. Statewide, there were 56 individuals in ICU, down 67. Twenty-one patients are intubated, down from last week's 29. So, new COVID regulations are fairly benign. If you have symptoms, stay home for at least five days, and then you can go back to work on the mask and the school. The schools will not be doing testing or reporting this year, as they did last year. So, I think at this time, it might be right to consider not doing a COVID update daily, not doing the news anymore. We're running the last whole dollar of COVID updates. It's just move past COVID, just weekly updates. And if those numbers spike or chase differently, we can do COVID updates going forward. So, unless the board objects, I'll be leaving the COVID updates off the updates starting next week. As long as we're talking about infectious diseases, the state has informed us that we've had a positive mosquito pool here in Situate for Western Isle virus. So, they put on a trap, they catch 100, 200 mosquitoes, they ride them all together, they test it, and tested positive for Western Isle virus. It's not new, Western Isle virus has been around for a while, but we just want people to take precautions, particularly with the rain. If you have standing water around your house, make sure you drain that out. Make sure your screens are off, fix your screen doors and screen windows and clothes. And if you go out between dusk and dawn, wear insect repellent or long clothing if possible. We'll keep an eye on that, but it's just one hit that we received so far. Water update, these numbers do not include the rain, they were fed since last night and yesterday. The reservoir was at minus 45 last week, we're at minus 42.5. Tech factory pond was at minus 14.5 last week, we're at minus 12.5. Average daily demand for the past week was 1,268 million gallons a day. It's up a little bit from last week to 1,228. We take a lot of that as a holiday week, a lot of people are on town. We still have a critical drought from the Commonwealth. Four people rejoice that this rain will lift the drought. Our deficit to rain in Boston is over 10 inches. So, we need a lot more rain before the drought conditions will change. Our wells are still running at reduced capacity, making us more rely on the treatment plant. The manages water then goes through the plant as the water heats up. Luckily, according to John Anderson, the cooler nights have lowered the manages levels in the water, we've got to down. We are working with DEP and our consultants for a temporary fix to the brown water, the manages issue. But really, the only fix for the brown water is the new water treatment plant, which will treat for IUDs. If you do have brown water, please let us know, it is a data point for us. We were able to fix a neighborhood, one particular neighborhood, by changing the flow of water. The complaints, the calls were down. So, it's almost more important now, if you still have brown water, to let us know, so we can track down what the typical cause of your brown waters. Rainfall over the last seven days, as of yesterday, was 0.18 inches. We are still on a tier four water dam, building essential outdoor water. Our water contractor will be back in Bill Situate this week, working on the loop to Ganet County Way area. Today's election day, you have about an hour and 20 minutes to get to the polls over at the high school. If you are returning ballots, they must go to the town clerk's office tonight by 8 o'clock, not to the polling place. They come back here, and the clerk's office will be closed tomorrow until 1:00 p.m. as they finish processing the primary results in that area we got. For paving, the utility road neighborhood back here, we've done the base coat, that's all finished. The contractor will be going back to raise castings, do final paving. However, we moved Burke Road and Tilden off the schedule, we told them that was higher on the priority list, and put the top coat down on utility. So, they'll be up there starting tomorrow, grinding Burke and Tilden in preparation for paving. We expect it to come down in the next couple of weeks, weather dependent. The contractor is also scheduled to be on County Way tomorrow. Mike Billson, who runs Ole Lake Copper Bears, in a pretty bad shape, that's gonna again depend upon the weather. Each contractor is scheduled to be out there this week. I wasn't down there today, but he's scheduled to be out there this week, working on those stairs. That'll be about a four-week project, weather dependent. Glaze will still be a one-way from Ganet to Bailey's Falls Way during this project, so the contract could have the machines to stop on the street. So, just please be aware of that, we're down there, the one-way is still in effect. It will not affect the school buses as they go in that direction anyway, if you check the school department before you make that change. Speaking of the school department, tomorrow's the first day of school. As I said this morning, congratulations to all the parents who made it through down the summer, getting the kids back in school. One of us, the superintendent, Burke Ed, and staff faculty and students, good luck for the school year. I know they're ready, they're gonna have a great school year. They have a new website, scit.org, so people can information, they have a new website. With students returning to school, I want to remind people, motorists, to be careful on the roads. There will be students walking, there will be students waiting for the bus. So, please slow down, be extra careful with all the students on the road for the next couple of weeks, we'll get used to it. Also, you cannot pass a school bus in other directions when the lights are flashing. Not only is it dangerous, but it is illegal, and since your police will be doing enforcement on that for the next couple of weeks. Two more quick things. Hollywood will be returning to Situate. We have an untitled novelist project that will be filming starting next week in the area of San Hills General Store on the beach. A film that will last about a week. Police Department has a traffic plan for any road closure, detail offices needed. We don't have the time that they're gonna be filming yet, it's gonna depend on lighting and time. What we had that we were posting on our website. I don't know who's in it, I don't know who's gonna start it, so no sense going down the loop, I know it's not me, they haven't called me yet. You will see some parking in a portion of Egypt Beach bike a lot, and a portion of Central Park that they'll be using for crew, so the station areas. The moderator's meeting will be next Tuesday at 3:00, and as Kevin will talk about in a little bit later in the meeting, we are still looking for plow drivers. Just kind of like doing it for interested, please contact me if you need to. And that's all I have for this.
Thanks, Jim. More, do you have any questions? For Jim?
Nope, I do not, thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Andrew?
Good.
Yeah? Yeah, Kevin?
Tommy. No, all good. Whatever.
Yeah, two quick things. Life guards, was this weekend or last weekend?
Plow drivers done.
So, life guards are done now. Go to the beach and throw them risk.
Yeah.
And they were pegging you through.
They're pegging you through, yes.
Great. And I did just want to mention, Ms. Conley had a request to put parking on Glaze Road on the agenda for A agenda, I was gonna put on this one, but I forgot. It's gonna be on the next, our next meeting's agenda, so anyone that interested in talking about parking on Glaze Road, it will be discussed at our next meeting.
Yeah, that's right. If I could add on, the disabilities commission ended up their agenda for tomorrow night. I happened to go and look to see what their agenda was, so if anyone's interested in weighing in, that's another forum to do, yeah.
Great. All right. Any questions from the audience? Both of you? All right. The first topic of discussion and vote is a block party. Is anyone coming in this morning, or?
Supposed to be Ms. Roberts, but I don't see her yet.
All right, I'll tell you what, we will.
It's September 25th, and.
They've done this before.
Yes, this is their second time.
Yeah.
Yes, they did it last year as well.
We'll give her a couple of minutes, and if she makes the trek in here, we can let her talk. The next item has been postponed. So, Kevin, do you wanna come up and talk about snowplow rates, and then?
Snowplow rates, great. So, what we did is, every year, we usually check with the other towns around us and see where their rates are going, everything else. So, we included a plow rate comparison that we submitted to the board, and it shows different rates the other towns are giving right now. As we've been saying all summer, we're getting killed for snowplow drivers, as well as our own guys, we're down quite a few guys. So, guys, gals, anybody that wants to grab a plow, come on. I'm worried Jim and I are gonna be in a plow this winter. I don't wanna see him in a plow, and if you see him coming down the street in a loader or something outside a mailbox. But we are, we're really short. So, what we did is, we did a comparison of all the surrounding towns, aim's doing the same, I heard they're raising their rates. So, what we're requesting is a raise in our rates, so that we can hold the plow drivers at work in Situate, not for going to other towns.
And what are you suggesting?
If you look in column two, four, eight is what I suggested.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
I had a suggestion, and then I did the delta from what some of the other towns are charging the highest pounds, just to show an evaluation.
Good, so for those of you that don't have this, we currently pay somewhere between 80, well, where the higher ones are gonna stay the same. So, 80 and $130 an hour, depending on the size of the vehicle. And Kevin suggested that we raise that to somewhat between 100, about a $10 to $20 rate per hour increase to about $100 to $140 an hour. And that is comparable with what we have in Normal, Longham, Hammer, Marshfield, Cohasset, and Situate, Dad and Far East. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Jim, any thoughts?
I mean, it's becoming a real issue, we gotta lose contractors in all the towns. I know Grovelow raised their rates last year. It's not something we like to do. I used to like going on snow, now it just looks like money falling out of the sky every time it snows, but we want to attract plow drivers, we have to be competitive with those drivers. The state pays better than all of us.
Okay, did you have a question?
No, they have to be competitive. Yeah, I'd like to know if we would even consider some sort of signing bonus, like extra upfront payment to get people to. Nancy? Nancy? She's shaking her head, I don't wanna give anybody.
Oh, you have.
I know, I know, but no, it's, that's what companies are doing right now, to give them signing bonuses. And if you can give someone a signing bonus to lock them in, I wouldn't just give them money, but I'd say, you have to sign a contract that, whatever the contract you want to sign, but if it's that difficult, you know, maybe we should consider it. Sorry, Nancy.
Yeah, I mean, the only, really hard difficulty is, you pay someone, and they decide not to come. Will you out of trying, I'll give them money, that's all. Somebody will get out, but I think the first step is to make a racing guidance, get down where it's still a little area.
Well, clearly the race, and clearly, if you're in Normal, do you wanna have to trust the Situate? You get the same pay in Normal, and it's less of a hassle to be in the Situate where you're running into rocks. Thing, it's the reality.
No, it is, we, you know, we manage to let some of the contractors tight, you know, in what we do with the storms. You know, Noel has the minute seems to be longer sometimes, but it's, it is, it's a tricky balance. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a hot year, service-wise, with the amount of contractors we're gonna have, with a lot of people retiring, and retirees, I mean, contractors that are retiring that we've been doing for 30, 40 years, as well as going down significant numbers in our DPW throughout the whole organization. So, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough winter for us.
I have another observation, this is always popular. I got a call last year from a pretty high-rate citizen upset.
Oh, sign them up, they can go to the plow.
That his private way wasn't being plowed, and I guess what I meant to say is, and I suppose, you know, it's just my opinion, but if I were people on private ways this winter, I would arrange my home plowing, because if we're sure, we're not getting there. So.
So, we don't plow private ways?
Well, it's not clear we don't. There's that safety issue that sort of is a little bit squishy in there. So, we do have a policy, if you wanna go online and look at it, it's there.
Typically, at the end of the storm, we will, we will open up some of the private ways, and always if there's ever a medical or emergency, we will, we will open up the street regardless, or private.
But as a matter of course, if you're on a private way, you should not expect to get plowed.
It would be at the very end of the storm, if, if, it all, it depends on, if, I have so many drivers, and now it takes them an extra 10 to 20 hours to complete the storm, with the guys that have been driving for 40, you know, up to 40 hours, it's gonna be harder to get them to go up to the private ways.
Andrew?
Hey, there are a few votes I regret more than not supporting the raiders last time. So, I certainly understand the need, state competitive, so I support. I do have a question on, what sort of, if someone is new to plow, what sort of training do they have to go to, they go to use, and what else? And if someone is, now, again, a hundred bucks an hour, maybe this is something I've never done, how do we? I don't know, anyone, anyone on the street, hey, I got plows.
No, somebody has a plow, somebody has a plow, and they're in a decent truck, and they feel they're interested in getting involved in it, and I suggest coming down to the highway line and meeting with Kim. Usually they meet with Mike Crane, but Mike Crane's out here, hip surgery. But they can meet with Kim, she can go over all the requirements that they need to have. The hottest thing for most people is, you need insurance. So, the town requires, we require an accurate amount of insurance, I believe, of like a million dollars for insurance for the plow. Most of the contractors carry that, so it's easy for the contractors to plow, but your average, your average guy who has a pickup truck isn't gonna carry that amount of insurance unless it's something that is cheapest.
And they start on your street.
And my revenue, I'm doing? No, really. 103, okay, I'm way over. So, I think it's pretty, so it's 103, so, oh, hi. I need insurance and finance.
And these are all contracted people, they're not town employees, they're?
Contractors, yeah.
Any questions from the audience? Can I motion?
Tony, I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Mark. Thank you, speak up.
So, A, well, B, I have two things, wanna comment, I completely agree with Andrew about training, especially if we're bringing a whole new fleet in, because our roads are not easy to navigate when there are six to 80 degrees of snow on the ground, and knowing where the edges are and all the telephone poles hanging over. But secondly, do any of these vehicles that you're posting for, Kevin, require CDL licenses?
Yes.
They do, okay.
They do. So, we have CDL licensed vehicles.
From what level, Kev?
It's a CDL class B. So, we have a couple of CDL class Bs, as well as hydraulic licenses on some of these, some of the equipment. For example, A.
Not every level, right?
No, the six-wheelers, you know, some of the six-wheelers, the bigger trucks are, and the 930, the loaders are also loaded.
So, is there, you know, to further sort of Karen's thought about signing bonuses, is there any type of incentive to help folks get their CDL license? You know, are there any sort of joint initiatives? Because CDL licensing is a problem nationwide, not just with Situate getting plow drivers.
Right now, no, I'd love to hear about any if there are, because I have some of my own guys that are working foots, trying to get their CDL, and now I understand the federal government has changed, that you have to take a class, that costs probably $5,000 to $10,000, and it can be an eight-week process just to take the class. So, it's pretty significant now to get the CDLs. It's not a, it's not taking the test, we used to train our own guys in-house, but it's become a lot more intensive to get the, to get the licenses.
I'd like to see us lean on someone that can help us address that, because I think that is, you know, a part of the larger issue. It's not just our rates, not that I don't support it, I do, but I think it's also the lack of folks that are actually out there licensed to do the work.
In the Plymouth County Highway Organization, we've been talking about that also, you know, not for anything, but, you know, you can drive a fire truck and you don't need a CDL, carrying a full tank of water, which is a lot heavier than the trucks we have, but as DPW operators, the guys still have to have full CDLs, class A and class B. So, it's things that's been talked about, the highway optimization.
Thanks, yeah, I just, obviously, I think we should.
Sorry, Mark, for skipping you, can I have a motion now?
Move that the Select Board increases snowplow rates as outlined in the attached plow rate comparison. Second.
Second, Ms. Canfield, the discussion, one last question, Kevin, how many do we need?
We'll take the earliest we can get.
How many we can get, three, four, is that, or 10, 12?
I can think we need at least eight.
Eight, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote, vote.
Mr. Yami.
Come to the audience, yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Is your name, Ms. Five to Zero? All right, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
So, Nancy, I know you have a presentation on the transportation rates. It looks like it's gonna take a little while, I was wondering if maybe we did some of the interviews first, and let these type people go home and eat their food, and then we can have the outward.
Aye.
Okay. Kevin, did you have something else?
No, I was just gonna stick around for the rates, which.
Okay. So, why don't we do some of the interviews for the board and applicants? See, Waterways, first one here, Rick Murray and David Dean, both here. That's it, you can come up together if you like. It's 25. Thank you both for coming in. It's a very popular committee this year, as in, quite frequently. So, Nick, you're the vice chair now? Yes, exactly, I am, correct? And David, you're an associate member right now?
Yes, sir.
And you wanna move up to a full member if you can? And if you wanna stay on board if you can?
Yes, you can.
Great. All right. Why don't we just start off typically, just give us a quick synopsis of what you're doing and why you wanna stay? David, wanna start?
Thank you. I've been in town for the past 23 years, since residence now for 13 years. I passed the Situate Public Building Commissioner and Chairman back in 2009. My past life was the airport manager at Marshfield Airport for the past 13 years. So, I have a tremendous amount of experience dealing with the state, dealing with grants, dealing with the laws and regulations, understanding how infrastructure works. Been an happy voter since I was about that tall. Still run around, and my daughter works over there at Road, and my nephews are both out there delivering people and passengers in the harbor and in the river. I feel I've enjoyed this commission, I feel I've made a bring something to the table. As we all know, the only way that we're gonna be able to continue moving this forward is to continue to find ways to get money. I work very closely in my past life and this life with legislators, and I just stay in the process, so I'm hoping, you know, working with Steven and the board, just to find more money to be able to accomplish some of the goals that the commission has put aside, that we've got a lot of money that we're going to need in order to keep the harbor running, safe operation, you know, some of the effort that we have to do, and the way more challenges, but, you know, getting the harbor up to speed, keeping it current, keeping it safe, getting the new docks for Marina, it's been great. So, I'm enjoying the process, and I would like to be able to move up a step, and that's gonna be great.
And also, just like to add, Mr. Denny has been a very faithful attending associate member, and very helpful in conversations to the rest of the board during various subjects that come up. That's all right, I'll chime in.
Thanks, sir.
Richard Murray, 16, Collier Road, nice to see everybody here again, thank you, all right, and Jim and Nancy and everybody. Mr. Yami, Mr. Chair. By the way, Jim, thank you for pointing out that you took the step away, I thought I got taller. A little way to my time, so I kept that. Yeah, so, as folks know, I've been very associated with Waterways from before my time on the Select Board, and I was the liaison, and I had the privilege of being on the Select Board, and been on the Waterways again for the last two or three years, I believe, and before that, a frequent attendee. I really like the committee, we have a very strong relationship with the harbor master, and I think, in parallel, Mr. Denny's comments, is I see one of our highest responsibilities is to the taxpayer, the Waterways, the price fund, funders through slip fees and mooring fees and so on, to make sure we're delivering a safe product, as you will, for the recreational voters, as well as the commercial fleet. We're very strongly about supporting the commercial fleet, which is always facing financial and environmental pressures. The lobster folks over by the coffee shop, that's really difficult to get into, as well as some of the logging vessels down by the town here, which has been renovated relatively recently. And like I say, I think it's a very well-run committee, and I hope to continue on in supporting it. And Ms. Karen has been liaison as well, it's great to see that the Select Board continues to support the Waterways, you know, as well. It's a, rural's a great town, and a lot of other great towns, and the west side of Situate is great, and all parts of Situate are wonderful, but the harbor and the harbor area and the rivers are one of the things that make us seem more unique, and I really enjoy the fact that the town government and the townspeople support Waterways.
Other questions for the board? More, do you wanna start?
I don't really have any questions, I can speak on behalf of both the gentlemen that are there, they're great leaders on the committee. You know, we have Dave, who wants to go from an associate to a full-time member. So, Rick's been a terrific advocate, help, you know, and also his knowledge in the area, so they're both great candidates, I don't really have any additional questions for them, but thank you both for all the work that you've done thus far.
Thank you, more, for the kind words, thank you.
Andrew, anything?
I guess, kind of generally, is there anything that's been frustrating, or has it kind of challenged you, seeing kind of recently, you know, I really wanna go back in and kind of address?
I've only got a year on the board, but, you know, any time you're dealing with any type of grants, it's always a challenge. Grants also require certain permitting, and that takes time, and it takes money, and it's really sometimes just sort of making sure it sort of comes together at the right time. The good thing is, is that I think the board, and as Rick was saying, we've got a really solid team, so we're able to plan, and then try to figure out our direction, how much budgeting's gonna be, what process we're gonna have to go through, what town offices we have to work with. So, you know, it's just something I think we take as we go, but we try to anticipate, and that's one of the great things about this board, it gets really unique men and women. that are trying to understand and bring in real value to this board. So it's very interesting, but nothing really crazy right now.
I think my frustration is not with the board or with the any of the town employees, but almost sort of with nature itself. I don't know if I owe you that much, Mr. Goodrich, but I'm as green as they come, probably greener than most. But some of these statewide environmental regulations don't make much sense. I'm trained as a geologist, I'm oceanographer. So for example, the mouth of the North River, when it starts to fill in, which it fills in every three or four years, it seems, so we need to do maintenance dredging. That material is coming from right there. And it's as clean as clean can be. And we're prevented by the statewide regulations from dredging it and putting it right back on the beach, which is where it belongs, where it came from last year, right? And it would help prevent further erosion, but by regulation, they need to put that offshore, which makes no sense taking it out of the system, environmental system, geological system, and it costs a lot of money. So things like that. And my colleagues on the Waterways Commission from '02, who's my first guy on, we've been having this conversation with the state every three years since 2002 and so on. So there's things like that that are a little frustrating, but you know, whining about it's not going to help because you've got to keep doing it and writing the proposals and Nancy's terrific help, you know, she's got numbers coming out of her ears. She can just tell us everything like, no, you can't do this and we need to do this or this is how we'll fund it. But it's those sorts of things that frustrate me that we can't, we're always going to need to dredge, but I mean, come on, folks, this just doesn't make any sense the way we have to deal with sort of the ramifications of it. Three one over here.
Karen, do Karen see?
Yeah.
We've tried everything. Yeah, I want to ask, what, if any responsibility, and I'm not assuming I know the answer, does the Waterways Commission have for some of the less commercial parts of the shoreline, like at Conservation Park? Like if we ever, we do have some ownership in front of the Maritime Center. Where does your responsibility end? And where does, for example, the Conservation Commission's responsibility end? Because I do know that in Conservation Park, for example, there's a lot of the infrastructure down there that's about to, you know, fall in. And do you have any responsibility for that or is it a joint responsibility or how does that?
I think I'll let the environmental board discuss that.
So that's a really interesting question. So in general, as soon as you step off of land, then you're in Waterways jurisdiction. When you're on land, you're on CONCON, TAN, DPW, whoever happens to have jurisdiction over that particular parcel. So for example, Conservation Park, that's administered and overseen by the Conservation Commission. We work closely with them because after all, a lot of people who use it are the voters. So particularly in years past, it kind of keeps coming up again. If there's abuse of the land by the people towing trailers or trying to launch in the wrong spot, we work with the French, Mel, this commission, the committee to try to make things, you know, all line up properly. In terms of financial responsibilities, the Waterways Enterprise Fund, which is, as you know, funded by the fees assessed to voters and so on and so forth, those are restricted for use strictly on the Waterways. 15 years or so ago, an issue came up for this board where there was a question, so who would pay for the railing down on Cole Parkway? And that was discussed, well, okay. And your predecessor, predecessor Jim, was arguing, well, okay, that's to prevent people from falling in the water. So that's Waterways, but I pointed out, well, they're starting on land, so that's actually the tech.
They can start in the water, they have to pull themselves up.
Exactly. So there was that, so that situation was funded entirely not from Waterways. So that's where the boundary is. Then you step off of there and you get into the floats for the marina, that's sort of the big one. So that's kind of how it works. There's some other crossover areas, like Waterways is paying for the racks for kayaks. There's been discussion about that. So those kayak racks are going to be on land, but they're clearly to serve people that are actually going on the water. So that comes under oath.
Well, clearly, and I asked the question, you've got to the point, is that you have the money. The Conservation Commission does have it.
Correct.
And so I'm just hoping that maybe there's some way, if we had to change the charge, or I don't know what would have to be done, but that, you know, there is some infrastructure that is related to maritime uses. And if we ever get to own the Sunset Road land,
Yeah.
it's, it's the Kenzie of down there. But there will be some need for some infrastructure down there. And I'm hoping that Waterways, I know you're not rolling money, but there could be some consideration given to the recreational voters who aren't paying slip fees and aren't paying co-are fees and that.
We work closely with the different Waterways, small W, Waterways Association.
Yeah, I, most of my questions have been answered, they were for coming in and having updated us on the work, which is substantial. The only comment I would add, and it's really remarkable along with what you're saying, is there's, we're starting to get better at having sort of cross-commissioned communication. Obviously, you know, with CONCON a long time. But I would, I'm beating this drum a lot this year, is the Beach Commission is on and running again and it's got some really great leadership again, obviously a lot of relaxed stuff. So anytime that, if you'd just be mindful going forward, that there are a lot, there are other committees doing really good work that kind of end over a little bit. To make sure we reach out, but thank you for the update. And I am one of the person I believe in on the frustration about the idiocy of some of the regulations that is from doing logical information.
Thank you. One final question for me. Wanted to get your sense, and Rick, you mentioned this to start, whether there was enough commercial fisherman representation on the committee? We have a unique situation where there's a commercial fisherman looking to get on board on the committee. I didn't know that there was someone else there, but there is actually another commercial fisherman on there already. Is that enough? Do you think that, is your voice being heard, I guess is my question? I know a lot of the fishermen just come to meetings and tell you what's going on. So what's your sense of that?
Yeah, personally, the more the merrier. I mean, I wouldn't want it dominated by recreational voters or commercial voters. It's nice to have broad representation, just my own view on it. We do have several that come in the audience and the associate membership is also a way to come up, but I would partly encourage more. We do hear them, certainly. My brother is a former commercial fisherman out in Bedford, so it's something very high on my, you know, I'm always looking out for them as our others. They're definitely part of our active community. We try to do the best we can, but the more participation, the better.
I feel it's a very open board. We've got a really strong mix of personalities, depending on the type of voting that they do. It's wonderful that we do a good job of trying to invite people in and understand their issues. But Rick says, we're always trying to get more people involved in all of our boards around town. And all you need to do is just fill out an application, try to get on board and learn and then you can, you know, try to help make a difference. But the nice thing is, most boards in town are always open and accessible. We want to communicate and understand. So getting back to the Karens with the various boards and everything, I think that everybody's really trying to step up their games a little bit. I've noticed that with, you know, the direction from the administrator, from the selectmen. I see a lot more of this cohesion going on. I know that when we are dealing with a project, we'll reach out and make sure that we're dealing with getting input from some of these other committees. And hearing about the Beach Committee, you know, I never even thought about that. So I learned something and that's, I'll really start thinking about who else we should be approaching to try to make sure that we're all working together. So, thank you.
Thank you both for coming in. Just a quick synopsis of what we're looking at. So two, and I don't really know if I'm going to speak. Two members resigned. So there are, I'm going to say there's an eight-member committee with the harbor master. So there's eight spots. Six of them are taken currently. Mr. Murray, Mr. Kelly are up for, we spoke about both of them, they're up for renewing. And then we have three associate members that are interested in moving up to full-time members. And all of them have only been on the board for one year, with due suspension data. And then we have one applicant that's looking to get on board as a full-time member also. So that's, those are the moving pieces. We're going to vote later on tonight, I think. And you don't have to stay around for that, but we'll try and put the pieces together.
Tony, can I ask you quite a clarification?
Yes.
That's not my understanding, so that's why I just want to make sure. Because I also want to have some clarity from Dave. So it's my understanding that we have two to renew, but we also have two full members that left, so two to fill. So if we have three associate members that are looking, three associate members are looking to move up to full members, that still leaves us with an opening for another associate, new associate member to join, correct?
Right. So there's, there's three associates. Well, I mean, just, renews are not automatic, as we spoke about, but.
Understood.
Yeah, getting there, but there's, there are, at the end of the day, is there's one new person and two people going out. So there's spots for everybody. There's a full-time one associate.
Okay.
Which I think is.
Dave, I have a question for you. And this is hypothetical. You know, if you weren't moved up to a full-time, are you still willing to stay as an associate until another full-time position potentially opens up?
I'm wrestling with that right now. I think I've put in a little bit extra of the time. When the secretary's not there, I'm doing the minutes. So I'm trying to, you know, show my weight, that I can do a little bit, do a little bit extra and show that, you know, it's important and when you're asked to step up, you step up.
I appreciate that.
I'm thinking about it, but thank you.
Yep. I'm going to ask all the associate members the same question. So I think it's really important that we understand that.
So your term is until 2024 as an associate member, is correct. All right. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Nice to meet you.
Mr. Chair.
Maureen.
Ms. Roberts.
See Maureen.
Hi, Barbara, how are you?
Hi, sorry.
Don't vote, come on up.
Forgot all about it, not going to lie. Yes, thank you.
Coming in?
Yes.
So tell us about the block party, what you're doing.
We are having a block party and a DJ, the 25th from four to seven. And maybe we have 42 people right now. So we're hoping to get to 50 and, you know, just the neighborhood, first clip, second clip. And, you know, that's, yeah.
Okay. So prospect?
Just closing prospect.
Just closing prospect.
Yeah.
Wait, and you've notified all the neighbors?
Yep.
And most of them are probably going to be there?
Yep.
And it's just going from four to seven with the, with the amplified news?
Yes.
Any questions for Maureen? Karen?
No, I do not have any idea that you've done this party before. You're good, you're good neighbors.
Karen, come on in.
What is the alcohol situation?
It's whatever people bring.
Okay.
So there's no, no one's serving anything.
And you kind of, someone's keeping track of that, that people weren't?
Yeah, we, I mean, we've only had this party last year. And we had, we didn't hear any complaints, but we're just curious to know. We didn't have any issues?
Yeah.
I would suggest, I guess it would be the same this year. I go, yeah, I think it's fine.
Ian?
No, I was.
You're mapping it?
A mapping it, dual mapping it, I mean.
So even if we close prospects, there's other ways to.
And I did have one, I, one question is, they didn't want, the fire department didn't want sawhorses, for lack of a better word. What exactly is okay to put so that people don't come up from Edward Foster? For the, for the fire department. I think they were going to get back to me.
Yeah, we'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay, fine. So.
Okay. Maureen, did you have any questions?
I didn't. I noticed that same sort of discrepancy, so that's fine, that's fine. All good.
Okay. Great. Any questions for the audience? All the department heads have signed off on this. You've done it before with no complaints. So can I have a motion?
Move to grant block party permit to Barbara Roberts, 15 Prospect Avenue, September 25th, 2022, from 4:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. And further move to grant outdoor entertainment permit to Barbara Roberts, 15 Ross McDad, September 25th, 2022. Entertainment with a DJ from 4:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. Further discussion? Say none, all in favor?
Roll call.
Books, creepers. I didn't write it down. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Vignali?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
That's Five Zero unanimous. Thank you. Enjoyed.
Great, thank you.
Hope you had good weather.
I hope so, too.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Okay. So we did the Waterways. I know Kate Verdi and Mary Lou is not quite ready.
We should have Teresa Barn at.
Teresa, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. You want to come up?
Sure.
And then we have John Monteros.
Hi, John, how are you? Why don't you both come up? We'll just.
Do it together.
Have a little conversation. How are you guys?
Wow, I'm young.
Great. So we're going to start this off with two simple questions and then we'll open up the board, but we want to know, what do we want to know? A little bit about you. And we want to know why you're interested in joining this committee. So John, why don't we start with you?
Okay. First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and I appreciate it. But why am I interested? What about me? And I was born in Cape Verde, island of foam. I came here when I was six, educated in Situate, Jenkins School, Walter School, middle school and high school graduate. I left after I graduated. I was actually in the top 20% of the class. I went to Tush University, got an engineering degree, owned an engineering firm for 30 years. And then when I closed that business, I started doing oil and geology overseas. COVID struck, so I've been pretty much stuck in Massachusetts. I have left. I've done a lot of things for the Cape Verdean community over the years. I was the president of the Cape Verdean American Business Organization. I was the president of the Cape Verdean Foundation, trying to raise money for different programs in Cape Verde. I've worked with children my whole life. I coached soccer for 23 years and coached softball for 13 years. I've traveled to Cape Verde 29 times. I know most of the people in politics in Cape Verde over the last 20, 30 years. I know the president of Cape Verde. I know the prime minister. I've been involved with the consulate office in Boston. So I have a lot of connections and, not connections, let me now be. I know a lot of the people involved. And if there's something that needs to get done, I have the ability to reach out to them and work with them directly. The last thing I did to Cape Verde is I helped bring the Cape Verde Fast Query to Cape Verde, which was a $24 million project that we raised. We brought the ships there. They're running from island to island every day. I was one of the main people that brought that there. And now it runs independently and it's helped the economy of Cape Verde. So I've been involved with a lot of that. Why do I want to do it? Anytime I can help Cape Verde, I'm interested. Simple as that. If I can do something, I want to do it.
Thank you, John. Teresa?
I don't know if I can agree with that, but. So I'm here because I was born also in Cape Verde. And I came here to Situate where my family was living when I was 10 and half years old. When I came, I went into the bi-level program. And I had some really friendly teachers from Situate who helped, you know, involve me, encouraged me. Because at that time, there wasn't a lot of Cape Verdeans that went to college back in the days. So I was encouraged by my teachers and graduated from Situate High School in three years because I was kept back. So that was a. So that was a chance, I was able to skip one grade, as I was much older than most of my peers, went out to college. And then I got into the human service field. And I've been in the human service field after about thirty-five years. Um, I retired last year as a probation officer at Rockton Teleport, where I was there for about twenty-six years or so. And as I indicated in my little sum, my write-up, I've had other various jobs in DCS, Department of Family Children, I'm a DCA licensed single estate. I worked for BYS, I've worked for a lot of homeless shelters and different things. Currently, I work as a clinician, um, in a program that I'm very passionate about, just the addiction field. So that brings me up to speed. So my grandmother raising several grandchildren, retired and worked full-time. What I do in my spare time, I do, um, I have a clothing drive that I'm working on organizing to give clothing for the homeless men, young women, that come into the addiction program. So I'm currently working on that. Um, this weekend here, I'm volunteering to put together twenty-five to thirty bag lunches to also donate to the homeless um, in the, in the part in the Rockton area. So it's like street ministry, street work. So that's what I'm doing. So as far as being here, I thank each and every one of you for allowing me to be here today. And I am just an extremely compassionate person, who feels that I have a lot to give and share. And I think that my life's experience, my culture from Cape Verde, and just the fact that I love my town, Cituit, where I grew up, and my family's still here. I'm here a lot at the beaches, visiting my family, my friends. So I'm well-connected, even though I don't live, I live in Rainham now, but I'm still very present, very much present um, in this community, and I love to have the role, the opportunity to continue to, um, work towards growth for Cituit and for my people.
Thank you very much. Both of you are very impressive. Um, I'll open it up to the board. Karen, you wanna start?
Yeah, I thank you both for coming in, and very excited about getting this committee up and running. The only question there that comes to mind for both of you is, um, what, how do you, this is a brand-new committee, and, you know, we have two of Sister Cities that are gonna be certainly helpful and develop their potential, but what do you see this committee contributing to, to Cituit community? I guess I'm asking for a vision statement, 'cause it's brand-new.
Um, I'd first have to say that I've never had experience in a sister city inception, so this is obviously gonna be opportunity for growth and development. Um, I think if we're open-minded, um, around the planning, and, you know, different things that we can do, so really right now, I don't know if I have the answer really to tell you, because this is all new to me. But I, I'm hoping that it'll be a success. And I have that answer.
Yeah.
Well, I think, um, for me, it's an opportunity to work with a whole gamut of people, from Americans, Cape Verdeans, children, adults, uh, to try to bring the heritage of Cape Verde that's come to Cituit, is another thing that we've done here. Um, I'd like to, you know, my background's in the environment and job creation, so I think working with some of the younger Cape Verdeans and, and young Americans also can show them ways they can go with their life, with their career. Um, and again, I'll work it together. Uh, my background, my history in Cituit was absolutely fantastic. I had great teachers, great friends. I never felt pressured, I never felt out of place, I was welcomed in everything I did. And I think that's what I learned over the years, and I still think that if you have an open mind and work with people around you, and understand one another, you're gonna be able to work together, and that's, that's been my, my whole life, and, and I wanna bring that to to other people, now that I have some time to do things like that. And I do, you said my background's admirable, yours is better, because you're actually working with people. I'm working to make money, you're working on people, which is, I find much greater than what I've done, so.
Thank you.
Well said. Karen?
Well, I'm so happy to meet so many wonderful people from this Cape Verdean community. Um, I've always known you were there, but, um, just to have people come forward to, you know, to do this, and I'm in particular interested in what observations you might have about Heritage Days. Um, Heritage Days, and this is no, I'm casting no aspersions on the people that have been doing it, but it, it seems like it's in need of some, uh, a pick-me-up, if you will, uh, and your community, I could see being, and, and this committee being particularly, um, an integral part of future Heritage Days. And so, you know, to your point, I mean, we have all these wonderful people in the community, and, you know, we're not just Irish here, we're not just, we're, we're a lot of different people, in particular, this community, so thank you for coming forward, and I think this is gonna be a great committee, and I don't know if you've gone Heritage Days, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. Andrew?
Yeah. Thank you so much for coming forward, and I think it's almost on the same theme, I mean, we're excited to learn more like Heritage Days, like our vision, is, is there anything that you're excited that someone wants to learn more about Cape Verde, you know, it's it's the history here in Cituit, or it's the history back there, it's, what's, you know, if you could walk up to someone saying, here's what I wanna tell you, what are you excited about right now?
Well, I think, I, I've been involved the last couple of years with Heritage Days, and I've been attending Heritage Days on about thirty years, or, I don't even know how long, but I think I'm here every year for Heritage Day Weekend, and what I would like to see, I have all kinds of photographs, I have all kinds of film, I have all kinds of information about Cape Verde. I'd like to set up a station where I can show people what Cape Verde is, okay? Show them some of the, I have film of every island. Each one is different. I have film of people speaking the language, talking back to my parents as I record information they wanted to give, 'cause they still remember my parents from sixty, seventy years ago. Um, so we have a lot of information, Mary Lou's not here. Um, she has a whole background with the Ernestina, which was the ship that even as part of my trip to the United States, even though it was a short base, I was on that ship. Um, she has a whole history there that she could bring out, and for people in the United States understand the role of Cape Verdeans in particular, but immigrants in general, I always think that's a plus, I always think that people need to understand what immigrants mean to this country. You know, short of your jobs, and I don't wanna get political, but I take a lot of immigrants who welcome technicals job, and helping out in, in all these different things, so there's so much we can contribute, and the biggest problem, both of my parents passed away in the last few years, all that information that I had, that wasn't recorded, I'd love to see Heritage Days recording some of that information. Getting some interviews with some of these older people, finding out what it was like, and having that on tape. Having that somewhere where twenty years from now, my great-grandchildren can go and listen to it. You know, and it's just, just a powerful thing, and I think this, this group can help do that. So going back to the vision, that's part of my vision, what I see then.
Teresa, anything to add?
I think I'd like to add, like, the music, because music is powerful, and I think music was also a form of communication. People fade way back into our African heritage, the way that they dance, um, what they portray, so that also has meaning behind it. So to hear the music, different types of music. 'Cause we have music, like sad music, that's melancholic. Then you have the, the drums that beat like the African drum, there's different dances. Maybe have a couple of performers come and do samples of each one of those dances, so that any of y'all, the young people here, that have not had that exposure can see.
Maura, did you have any questions?
Um, just one, and thank you both for coming forward, you both have an enormous amount of historical perspective, obviously. Um, just from, as, being a part of a committee member, new committee, right, there's gonna be, you know, thirteen to fourteen folks, it'll be twelve. You know, what would you say, what is your, the skill set or your personality that you will bring to that table to make sure that, you know, initiatives can move forward? Um, as far as culturally, educational, and also economic development, 'cause I think those are really the three big buckets that our Sister City Committees work towards. So curious just to understand, you know, your skill set and what you'll bring to the table with your other colleagues on the Sister City Committee.
I'll, I'll start, first of all, opportunity. Um, there's so many different ways, not just Cape Verdeans, but uh, young people here, and I could show them where they could go and get very, very, very fruitful jobs. Introducing to people who have awareness of where these jobs are. And they, you know, using the skill sets and the, their, the educational skills that you get from Cituit. Cituit's one of the best schools around. And putting these students, the young people, in a position to do something with their lives, because that's the only way you're gonna give back. If you, if you make yourself into something, you're gonna wanna come back and help everybody else around you. And that's the way all cultures do it, and that's what we need to do.
Thank you.
Teresa, do you, any closing comments?
Um, I'd have to say I would be bringing my best attribute, which is my ability to motivate others, and my ability to, to work and talk with people, very people-oriented, and I have a really, just a really, um, positive way of embracing and letting people follow cultural backgrounds and diversity. I think that is bringing me.
Great. I don't have any further questions, I think you're both spectacular candidates, and, and you bring, you know, different skill sets in, in the whole committee in general, so I'm really excited about that. I will say one thing that is, is striking, is we're getting a lot of people on the committee that is, that don't own a town. If you live, you live in Plymouth now?
Yep.
And you live in Rainham, which is great, I mean, that's not, it's, there's no problem with being on the committee there. But it's a committee that's, you know, Cituit isn't, you know, close to anything. Um, and, um, you know, and we, you know, it's, it's the, the, the town stuff that'll be going on, so that would be one kind of thing to just pay attention to, most of the stuff's gonna be happening in Cituit, and it's it's not just going like a front door, I mean, you're right, there's
I'm here every week, two, three times a week, so.
Right. Right. Alright, what we're gonna do, uh, tonight is we'll vote the positions, I think last time we voted six people, and there are ten member committee, so, um, there's a few other people that have come and and, uh, applied, but I would, I would be surprised if, uh, we make some commitments later this evening, so, thank you both for coming in.
Thank you very much, and I beg you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so jumped around a little bit. Um, so, what is the, do you wanna do the, again, just 'cause I see people here that I don't wanna sit through a twenty-minute discussion about transportation?
But so interesting.
So do you want, you think it'd be best, I assume you're with
Yes, that's a poll.
Yes, Paul?
Yes.
So why don't we, why don't we do the, um, the design for the, um, Cituit Harbor Park yet? Does that make sense?
Yes.
So we're about to discuss and vote, um, the project to, um, for debate to improve, um, live enough of the Pier Forty-four area right now. Um, Karen has been very close to that, so I'm, I'm certainly gonna kind of set it up.
Well, I first of all have to thank Andrew for jump-starting this about a year and a half ago, for getting us back on track, we need to use Pier Forty-four, and I call it that because everyone knows where it is, so I'm instead of calling this the Cituit Harbor Advisory, whatever, whatever.
I tried, I tried.
Otherwise, I should, yeah, so, Pier Forty-four. Um, and we've been lucky enough to have a good subcommittee, uh, chaired by Paul Barkowitz, who has been really instrumental in keeping this moving. Um, I guess people understand that once we bought Pier Forty-four, we owned it, and for those of you who don't know, we can't sell it. We can't turn it into a commercial venture. But it's an incredibly unique piece of property, it has been used over the years for meeting rooms, for functions, uh, and the, uh, it was the home to the library when the library was being renovated, so it's gotten a lot of good use over the years. But, you know, I think we all thought about a year and a half ago that now is the time to look at this property and to move it forward. So with that, I will thank Mr. Barkowitz for being a great chair of this committee, and as I said, he's kept things moving through thick and thin, through Covid, and Corey Miles, I wanna thank as well, because she came in, we were getting a little frustrated about getting an RPO, and within a couple of weeks of her being here, she didn't. And what we're here to talk about tonight is the proof of that labor. Um, we were lucky enough to have, I think it was eighteen? Fourteen? No, oh.
We had seventeen, uh, at the pre-bid meeting, right?
Everyone, anyone who was interested in this project had to, it was mandatory, had to come to a pre-bid meeting. And so, uh, out of that group, eight submitted, uh, applications that were all well-done. And it was not easy to, I know, for the committee to, you know, narrow it down, but I think that, and Jim, obviously, as the town administrator, has been intimately involved with it. So with that, I will ask Paul to tell us what's going on with it, and how we arrived at this particular objection.
Great, uh, thanks very much, uh, good evening, uh, select board members, from Paul Barkowitz, from the chair of the Cituit Harbor, um, advisory development commission, redevelopment commission, SHARC, we did this. Karen said we call it the Pier Forty-four. Uh, and, uh, you know, this isn't just any other piece of property or any other project. This, this park will be the iconic gateway to our working Cituit Harbor. It'll be, uh, quintessential Cituit. It's where our kids and grandkids will get their prom pictures, go to get engaged, and get their wedding photos. It'll be a magnet for the harbor. It'll be the town meeting place, I think the catchphrase for Cituit will be eat us at Pier Four, Pier Forty-four. Uh, so that's how important it is, and that's why we're so excited, and as Karen said, uh, our commission really appreciates the support of the select board, and Jim, for us in reporting, and the rest of the town staff. And I do wanna add our appreciation to Andrew Goodrich, uh, you were the previous liaison, uh, for the board, and you, you really got things going, and, uh, got us off on the right foot. Uh, just to go back a little bit, where were we, so in, in two thousand and ten, a town meeting, uh, the town approved purchasing property, and then you appointed first, uh, Pier Forty-four commission. Uh, you did, uh, surveys of, uh, town, uh, staff, departments, and commissions about potential uses of the property, and the recommendation was, uh, for recreation and then park. Uh, you did an online survey, more than a thousand people participated. And again, the, the primary recommendation was for a passive park. Uh, the commission in twenty twelve completed its phase one report. Uh, it's a really good report, it's on our SHARC website, and you can access it from the town website. And, uh, the recommendation was to 迁 away the existing building and, and develop a passive park. Then there was a wall for a number of years, while all the projects, the community center, the senior center, the library went forward, and, and I think more meeting spaces were established. Uh, and so then turned the focus back on, uh, the Pier Forty-four park, created our commission. I did wanna mention also, with our commission, our Trish May, who represents the Harbors cultural district, Jennifer O'Neal, who's with the Recreation Commission, Craig Rosenquist, who's with Waterways, Jeff Dugan, and Eric Donovan, on the Commission of Disabilities. Of course, Karen's our liaison, from the select board, and Corey, that is our very capable staff. Uh, we did another online survey in twenty twenty-one, another thousand, more than a thousand people participated. And, uh, again, the consensus was to develop a passive park. Corey led the, the developing, the request for qualifications, as Karen said, we had uh, really outstanding interest and quite a bit of enthusiasm. Uh, we had eight, uh, We had eight proposals, and I think as the review panel consisted of Kevin Katschke, Cory, Karen. Trish May and myself, I think we, as we went through every proposal, wow, this one would be great. Then you get the next one, wow, this one would be great. I all eight, I, I think we could have selected any of the eight, which is really gratifying. We, this review panel ranked all the proposals from one to eight, and then we did Zoom interviews with the top three. In July, and the unanimous recommendation of the review panel was the Copley Wolf Design Group. The. I mean, we provided a summary to the board of the process and what the, what we highlighted from each of the interviews. And I certainly want Cory to speak to this, because she's, she's the expert sitting at the table here, but. It's a well-established firm, goes back to nineteen ninety. It's got significant experience in developing waterfront parks, which is what we're talking about. They worked with Citu before on the comprehensive wastewater, the sustainability study. Continuing to support the INI program, conducted the Millworth Marina Anchorage Evaluation, so they, they have. A long, ongoing relationship with the Citu. I think really importantly, they were very proactive in identifying potential funding sources, which is going to be important as we. As we come to a design concept, bring it to town meeting, and go forward from there. And, and secure funding. They, they're very proactive, again, on the issues associated with demolishing the buildings, potentially dealing with hazardous materials. They have a really sophisticated permitting strategy. I mean, we're, we're going to be on the water side with that pavilion. As well as on the land side, so there are unique issues associated with that, that they seem very experienced with. I think it was important to us that part of their team was the cost estimator, who's certified, who knows his. Certified and disadvantaged business enterprise construction consultant firm. And that's a priority for the town, so it was for the mission and review panel. But they're also proactive in recognizing that our desire to have. Our, our Citu culture reflected in this project. And so they had some interesting proposals, and I think that's something that they're going to be really great to work with. So the, the proposed proposals in two phases. The first is a site analysis, a conceptual design. For the community outreach, they'll develop a dedicated website involving the Pier Forty Four Park, located in one place. They'll develop three concepts and cost estimates, and our goal is to have something for town meeting in twenty twenty three. Phase two will be then to do the technical studies, preliminary engineering, design renderings of the sort of design. They'll do the building demolition assessment, again, more community outreach, define the cost estimates. And then issue a file of report, and that process will run from April through December of twenty twenty three. You've got a copy in your packet of the cost proposal. It's a total of three hundred and three thousand, three hundred and eight dollars, not to exceed that amount. For phase one and two. So our, our panel recommends approval of the contract. Our commission supports the selection of Copley Wolf, and I'll ask Cory, again, she's the expert, you should listen to her. To give you any more information if you want.
Uh, one thing I, I also wanna point out is they did have a lot of similar experience with small towns in coastal Massachusetts. They highlighted one park they developed in the town of Essex. Which had a lot of similar features and some of the comparable. Design elements that we'd like to see here in Citu, so I think they're really capable, very, they're very enthusiastic to start on this project.
Great. Thank you both. Why don't I, I'm going to the board, and Andrew, you wanna start small?
I mean, I think one small correction, it's not a good subcommittee, it's excellent, and I think also indispensable for doing this, and Courtney, thank you so much. Sorry, I think the timeline is appropriate, as you said, given the breadth of spoken business. Is there anything, any in particular you wanna bring our attention to during that timeline, which is gonna be critical for us to kind of meet that? I know we're going here, what other kind of support do you need from the town and from us to make sure this continues to go forward? So we don't get any more unforeseen delays.
Yeah, well, I think as throughout the process, as you know, the liaison to the board is a critical element. It's a very wide, very wide. Board liaison on this commission. That's, that's served us well. Jim's been great in terms of access and, and keeping this going forward, and when we have a need, it's fulfilled. There were, I mean, we're, there's lots of stories to tell about. Working with the MBTA and, and all of that, and I'll let Jim tell those stories sometime, but. So, yeah, I'm, I'm really confident that we've, we've got the team together that we need and coordination can break. And our commission is really strong group, and part of the built-in outreach, of course, is that they all, they talked to their. They do a commission to increase recreation, cultural, waterways, commissioning disabilities. And economy development, to get their input and get the word out that this is happening. We certainly don't wanna find ourselves in town meeting, be it April or whatever it is, and this is surprising, but it should not be. And in the process, we've developed, we'll ensure that it's, it's a well-informed proposal that I think will support it.
More?
Thank you, and thank you, Paul, and everybody, and Cory. You really have raised the bar. On this from, I think, our original initial thoughts of what would, what we would do there, and I, I love what Copley Wolf has put forth. A couple of things about them that I do like, that I did read through, is their focus on sustainability and also their experience in. Building revetments and fortifying different coastal areas and waterways. I thought that was. You know, something that I really hadn't thought about when we first started looking at this project, so I appreciate you. All in your committee making that a priority. I didn't hear the answer to Andrew's question, so I had a little bit of a tough time with the deliverable at twenty-two months. Is that the deliverable from Copley Wolf with a full design going to next build phase? Or are we looking at twenty-two months for design, and at the end of twenty-two months, we should. Have something built pending, obviously, nobody has control over construction, but, you know, pending other initiatives. I didn't hear the answer to that.
More?
Yeah, I think that, well, they actually revised the timeline, so it's a little bit shorter, but. At the end of, at the end of their, their, their work, we'll have one preferred concept. Design that will be ready to move forward into. You know, for more detailed engineering design, so we should be able to. Have design renderings at, at the end of this that show exactly what will be situated throughout the park. Architectural designs for any. Build-in restroom, community center that will end up being there, as well as the waterfront pavilion. So.
I didn't see that it was pulled back. What is it now? It's twenty, what did it get reduced to? Or shortened to?
Fourteen months.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, phase, phase one runs through April twenty twenty-three, and phase two to December twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and, and the other thing that I did like about their resume, if you will, quote unquote. Was their experience with working with state agencies. I would like, if, if, if the board does approve this contract moving forward, I would like to make sure that we are aligned with. Doug Cameron, who's working on the Jericho parking lot project with the Waterways Commission. So, you know, it's kind of speaking to what Karen was talking about earlier, understanding what other commissions are working on and aligning, and making sure we're. You know, moving forward at the same time, because even though there's private property that separates that and, and this lot, I still think it's important to leverage wherever we can. Whatever they're gonna do over there and understand that, so it has a nice cohesive look, and the harbor could really look fantastic.
Yeah, I like it. Yeah, thank you. Karen Campbell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, Mr. Eric touched on a couple of things that I think are really important that are included, is just. Being mindful of the resiliency. We have our, you know, Cory is very familiar with that, our coast, the Mill Harbor, that's kind of the whole name of the resort.
The Harbor Resilience Master Plan?
Yes. That is, you know, included in that, so we need to not forget that.
Excuse me, I, I just mentioned that Mill Mo Park in Essex. As Cory said, it's a real comparable waterfront. It's a resilient city, fortification involved. It's a very challenging technical issues and, and that I thought were handled in a very creative and productive way.
And then, so to, so just to clarify the design, so we get to, you know, the end of December next year. Then we'll be back looking for a contract for the actual design. And construction.
Go for the construction.
For the construction.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll have, we'll be able to, for, for the third phase, the final phase, it'll be. Construction, yeah.
That's what it is.
Yes.
Okay, it wasn't clear to me either when I looked into that. And the last question that I have is. It's sort of the chicken and egg question. I don't even know how we're gonna do. So they're gonna have the three concepts, they're gonna have the three timelines. You know, one's gonna be a Cadillac, one's gonna be Honda, we know. It's just the way that nature is, but we won't be able to see funding. Until one of those is chosen. But what, what, I, I guess at what point do we make a determination that, I mean, where do they insert the, and look for punches? Into this, and help us with that? Because I hate to come to town meeting and say, we'd like to do a Cadillac, and then the position for a Ford, I don't know.
I think they were pretty proactive in, in understanding what grant funds are available. There is a number of different. Programs that you can get from the state of Massachusetts, but then also foundations, which we hadn't considered as well. Like cultural foundations, arts foundations, so I think. It might be sort of piecemeal in terms of where we go for funding, but ultimately, we'll, we'll have some sort of idea by. By the end of town, by the end of the first phase, we'll have the three concept plans with associated cost estimates. Pretty cool.
Where, in what piles we could go out of reach.
Yeah, and then in phase two, we can further refine that and start looking.
Yeah, I, I think just to supplement that, I think we. We, we want to, what we bring to town meeting in terms of concepts, we, we want to, you know. Quite a bit to explore funding sources and have a kind of good idea of what can be funded and, and. So. And, you know, I think the town has a pretty, a pretty good job of that in other situations, so. I think that would be definitely a part of what we're going to put goals to this project for. And then, as Cory said, in phase two, really refining that.
Great, thank you for your work on this project that we, for, to shovel on the ground over there.
Karen, do you have any questions?
No questions, but I, I will say that the overwhelming response of some of the, we even had some people from New York. Reply to this, because it will be, if it's done correctly. A marquee project that I'm sure will wind up on the covers of many of their brochures, because it does, you know, involve resiliency. It involves a public. Something that can be, you know, a real unique venue in a kind of Citu itself. But, and I will say that to anyone out there who's interested, you will have multiple opportunities to weigh in on this. We will have a number of public meetings. So that people can give us more input. There's never too much input, and we, we are aware of the fact that. You know, people have some strong feelings about it, but, you know, we'd like to keep this moving along.
Couple of questions. So we mentioned some, obviously, we don't know what it's gonna look like yet. That'll be coming in the next phase. Conceptually, what did you direct them towards? I heard, I heard a waterfront pavilion, I heard a visitor center, I heard bathrooms, I heard a park. Are those, is that the direction that you kind of gave them in terms of what the landscape would look like?
We, yes, we followed the, you know, the, the prior surveys, the phase one report. You know, it's just not feasible to keep that building where we need to be constructed. The, we, in some of our outreach, we heard, you know, a strong desire to have. Nice restaurants and some space for the visitor center. And then in talking with the high school, we were told, you know, the, the high school has marine biology classes. And they down in the harbor, and it'd be great to have small meeting rooms. You know, for, for groups like that to be, and we're thinking maybe fifteen to twenty people. The sailing team for the high school launches in the harbor, and it would be nice to have restaurants where they can change if they're, for that visiting teams as well. And they have their, you know, pre-meeting, pre-regatta meetings, so. So it's, you know, a passive park with kind of a small building to, to those types of, of activities. And then, yeah, one of the recommendations from the phase one report, which I think was really. Farsighted, was to utilize the, the water side as well. And, and so we're thinking of, like, you know, the, that. That kind of a pier area at the Harbor Masters office, something bigger than that, perhaps kind of a building. You've got small events, maybe small weddings. But that would add to the utility and kind of expand our footprint beyond what we have right now. And then, of course, parking, the onsite parking and, and part of the design would be to propose adequate. Parking configuration and maximize the, the space, all the space. So those are the kind of things we, that were in the request for qualifications, and the proposals were very responsive to that.
So the building, park, parking, and I don't quite understand the, the water side of it.
Yeah, and.
Is it a structure?
Yeah.
So you think it's, is it a, because there's, we don't actually own. Any of the usage of any docks or anything out there?
No, we're talking about a new, a new dock that it, it's kind of a. It's, it's not really a dock, it's not a pier, it's, it's kind of a platform that's, that's for small events. That would, you know, stand in the harbor, and that's, that's part of the, the. Site analysis, phase one, of what's, what's the feasibility of that technically and from a permit standpoint. But that's, yeah, that would be part of the proposal, and we would expect back, and if they tell us that you can't do it, then. Then, you know, we, we work with that as well.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a great idea. The, the last question I have is, did they give you a price range in terms of the cost of the project, regardless of funding? Is there some sort of guideline from, like Karen mentioned, the Honda and the Cadillac, is this a. Million dollar to a five million dollar project, or was the, would, would they be in sense of that?
Yeah, we, we didn't ask for that, and I think it would have been too soon, until we have some concepts, until this investigation is done. Cover any limitations, physical limitations, technical, legal limitations on how a topic can be used. But that would be part of phase one, to develop three design concepts with, with the cost estimates. And then in phase two, we, we'd further refine those to come with one concept, one design, and, and refine the cost. And then in phase two, we, we'd further refine those to come with one concept, one design and, and refine the cost test.
So they gave no sense at all what the checkbook is gonna be?
They didn't ask, right?
No, it just seems, no. It seems, you know, like one. And would we get a sense of that from the, their fee, their fee's three hundred thousand dollars? Is that, isn't designed, is that typically like eight to ten percent of the?
Generally, design is ten percent of the construction. At the end of phase two, we are expecting to get, here is the design, this is what it's gonna cost. We have something to take to town meeting, so okay, this is what we need to go forward. And, you know, when I talk to them, really, it's, it's more of how active you want it to be. And the more buildings you put, if it's just a park with plantings and grass and things like that, it's gonna be, I don't know, say inexpensive, but relatively inexpensive. Put a bathroom, it goes up. If you stop putting structures and meeting rooms and parking, it's gonna go even higher. And really, the big limitation down there is parking.
Some of the sustainability, sorry, no question. Some of the sustainability issue is probably gonna be a bit more expensive, but probably either anyway, they kind of fit into the harbor master plan anyway, and that's some of those are the ones.
Yeah, I see. But if you put a building down, that goes up in rates.
It's a building, not a.
It's gonna, it's gonna be more expensive than just putting a, a building.
Right, and it's in a flood zone, so it's actually, right, under the current waters. Great, well, I'm, I'm personally looking forward to seeing when, when they come up. You know, I think it's, I was here when we bought the land, we almost had high hopes for it. So I'm really interested to see what their inside concepts are.
You, you were part of forming the 44th.
Yes.
Good job.
I, I did that most of the time. Karen, one last comment?
Yeah, one last comment about the parking. Laura, you had mentioned the, the state, and we in fact brought that issue up to, to the three finalists. What kind of relationships do they have with the state? How would they feel about working with the state in concert to make sure that at the very least, the, the look and the feel, that they're, you know, similar? And one of the things we did talk to Poppy Wolf about was the parking at Jericho Road at the Boat Rant is often not used. It's heavily used at certain times and then almost not at all at other times. So, you know, I don't know what, how the town would feel about reaching out to the state to see what other anything we could do make use of their parking so it's not sitting idle as much as it does.
Any last comments? Not, kind of motion?
Oh, thank you.
We have a fee yet?
Yes.
Three hundred and three thousand.
Okay.
So move to award a contract to Poppy Wolf Design Group for Phase One and Two for the development of concepts, designs, and engineering plans for a new waterfront amenity at forty-four Jericho Road in an amount not to exceed three hundred and three thousand dollars and thirty-eight. Second?
Second, Mike. Mr. Goodrich for the discussion. Oh, we're gonna roll call.
Wait, can I have further discussion? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Where's the financing coming from?
This money's coming out of the MBTA mediation fund, we're paying forty-four.
Mediation, MBTA mediation fund.
It is, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Should I make a call? Roll call?
Did someone else have an order? All right.
No worries.
Go ahead then.
Uh, Mr. Vinyan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
And myself?
Yes.
Great. Thank you guys for all the work. Paul, do you have one quick question for you? What was the name of that park in Essex?
It's in the.
Cono, Conemo. C-O-N-O-H-O, Conemo Point Park.
Right.
Great. And it's, it's in, it's in their proposal. As, as I said, it's, I, I plan to get right out there and get some pride plans probably and then check it out.
Yeah, I was just looking around that. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Jim, please.
Thank you. I deserve just round the, because Laura's giving a good line. Uh, Lorraine, we did take a roll call vote to accept the, um, a call of gravity.
Ocean volume, sorry.
Second by Mr. Goodrich.
I'm sorry, for a minute.
Ocean, please.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so let's start with the transportation.
We have.
Yes. And please look at your presentation and hopefully answer some of the questions that came up. Yeah, yeah, I was very good. So hopefully we need to go number nine, what we can do. We need to raise the rate. I couldn't get it, and maybe I just saw it. What are we looking to raise the rate by? What's the total dollar of it?
So we have a couple of options. So one of the things we wanted to talk to you about is how much it was going to cost to have a new person down there. And there's a range on that. It's below, if you include benefits, probably about sixty thousand. And the highest is somewhere in the mid-seventies, depending on whether there's some ops for family plan, individual plan, and the like. So we wanted to mention that as well. And you did say you were familiar with the presentation from reviewing it. Just for the column, the page inter program was adopted by Citigroup in nineteen ninety-nine. There's fifty-nine municipalities, there's a hundred and fifty-five communities in the state of Abbott, fifty-nine of them have curbside, ninety-six that drop off, which is what we have. And the benefit of that is there is generally less household waste. The reason why we're talking about rates again is because it's tied to operational costs. For the most part, that's been driven by all-in-cost increases, debt service for capital needs rather than having a retainer to pay for items, contract, general contractual increases, the dual costs, as everyone knows. But also, we talked about in the spring, because staffing needs down at the transportation station is currently staffed by four full-time people. There is a need for at least one more person, a fifth person. If there's any kind of an absence due to illness, vacation, personal time, that has to be covered from somebody in highway or public grounds. And if there's, on the weekends, that has to cover the full overtime. So that, that's problematic for the budget for Sean's administration, but it's just problematic for people. We need that extra people, that extra person. So that was something we asked the board to think about. There are other capital projects that are in the queue, truck security, facilities, facility repairs, and I know Sean is actively working on his capital plan, just doing it. And so.
Just reading.
Doesn't he like that? Um, so we talked in the spring about a five or ten dollar sticker fee increase. You asked us to take a look at the bags and see if that could be another source of revenue rather than the sticker increase. And he also asked us to look at the cost between municipal service and part of all, or, or related to that. So.
This is very.
Sean did a, a great analysis on the private haulers and we are the best game in town. It's still, by far. It's just if somebody, if, if price is not a concern for you, then you might still wanna go with private hauler. But if price is a concern for you, we're the best, best deal to be at, right? As Tony said, by far, pretty much ten percent lower than everybody else.
So let's, this is very important. So if you can just run through the numbers real quick on what you found in terms of the cost you used. You're serving four different companies.
I can't take it at first, all that, it's not new at all.
I just want people to hear what it costs annually for you to use the transfer station versus, you know, through one of these companies.
Right, so you, you tried to narrow it down by the size of the container, which limited it to so many bags from the transfer station to try to have an average across all of the different vendors. They had weekly pickup, bi-weekly pickup, so we thought that was a disadvantage. You wake up late on Tuesday and you grab it, you're gonna hang on to it for another week, so that was an advantage. Some are charging extra for recycling. The variable pickups for miscellaneous, two of them don't offer it at all. One of them has an outsourced company. And the fourth one charges sixty dollars plus whatever that item costs to dispose of. We tried to level the playing field with three bags, three large bags a week. And the transfer station sticker with a monthly cost of seven fifty, or three hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the year using the Citigroup transfer station. No limits on quantity. And a lot of things that aren't capable that other transfer stations aren't able to do. Very few things do not go through the Citigroup transfer station. We have a way to dispose of the problems.
That's correct. So you said, Sid, to use a transfer station, and you, you tried to level, you know, keep it, look at everything the same way. It was three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and between the four facilities, it ranged from seven hundred, seven hundred and six, almost nine hundred and a thousand dollars a year. So that's, like you, like me, as you said, if money's not an issue, that this is, you know, the, the most cost-effective way. It hasn't, not even bringing up the other benefits, if you just run a shop, like, if Christmas is on a Wednesday and your pickup is on Tuesday, we gotta hold all that, that stuff for long, so. Great, great analysis.
Thank Christine for that in our office.
So I think Sean just covered everything on the side, but I was getting a chance to run his analysis, see if there's anything he's sort of over from memory. So Sean also did a very scientific analysis that was, had a creep factor to it, I think, for some people who went through it. But Sean went down to the transfer station and randomly took bags from people and weighed them. Some people still hanging on to the bags, too.
They like it.
Relax them ways though.
So, uh, on the small bag analysis, this was the results. Sean did a random sampling of twenty-two small bags. The average weight was ten point nine pounds, and the break-even weight is sixteen pounds. So what he found is that the, we are making money on small bags based on, on this random sampling that he did. And then you have the list of all the different weights that he had. We won't go into the scientific analysis now, but it's.
Interesting. I just said, just thank you for, I mean, seriously, that's real data, that's real information. No, I mean, that's, they've got a little bit of, of some of those.
And he didn't get a.
I love it.
Sean took everything that he said to heart and, and when he told me what he did, I'm like, wow.
I think you got my bag, because I did.
Yeah, they're right. You can see some of them twenty-eight, while all of them, or, or, you know, some of them higher than other.
So the same thing on the large bag analysis, he took another twenty-two. The average rate was twenty-one point six. Obviously, he skipped out on Tony's, and the break-even weight is thirty-three pounds. But like he said, on the third column, the top one, you could see somebody was really shoveling the bricks into the bed, I bet that.
Right, but this is, even if you're off some, right, this isn't even close. You know, it's twenty-one pounds compared to thirty-three. So if you're off by twenty-five percent, we're still making money on this, so.
And I don't know if that's been looked at in a long time.
Yeah, it was, I can't remember ever. I never traveled from breaking the bathroom scale.
Um, so Sean also, he got a great spreadsheet, and we gave you the link to it, or anyone else that wants to find it, it's on the state's website, that looks at page inter programs. So this is just our neighbors looking at those communities and seeing when they started it, the population, what the household serves, the type of service, but also what type of bags they have and the cost of their bags. And if you can take a look at the second, second to last column, everybody was at, for the large bag, was at two dollars in our neighbor, in our neighbor communities. So we, where we were making fun, money on the bags, they were, it didn't seem to be confusing to change that. But if you look at the final column, where there was some variance, it was the annual fee. Everything from seventy-five dollars of proacid to, I said, ninety, to, you have Marshfield, which has the Cadillac of all trash services. They come to your door, you can go in and out of there like seven days a week. It's, it's got everything. And that has an annual fee of three hundred and eighty dollars to pay the Cadillac service. So we wanted you to have all this information. And also let you know that two of our neighbors don't offer more than one type of bag size, that's larger. That's it. We don't have a ton option for small. So when we looked at the stickers again, and brought that back to you, this, these are the number of stickers that have been sold over the last few years. The average for that period is about sixty-seven hundred. As you know from our discussions before, there was a little skew between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one because of the onset of COVID. They weren't enforcing the sticker sales. So based on Sean's, very scientific and not done previously, so very worthwhile bag analysis. It didn't support an increase necessarily in the per bag fee. Um, it's, and the fee is comparable to our neighbors. But we still wanted to have additional revenues that we could add, a fifth staff person for the fiscal twenty-four budget cycle and also for the other needs that enterprise wants. We felt that the sticker fee increases increase effects all usually equally, regardless of the type of line you dispose of. So if you're disposing of all of your, I don't wanna say max, because that's a problem now, but all of your white goods. Or if you just have one bag every two weeks, you're a small household. Everyone's excited to say, why? If it was a ten dollar sticker fee increase, it would be sixty-seven thousand, six twenty. Fifteen dollar, it would be one hundred and one thousand, four thirty. And then we gave you a tailored version, which we'll have this in a chart in one more slide. But we just wanted to provide you with what the tailored version was. It was ten dollars on the first sticker, fifty dollars for an additional, so that's fifty percent of the first sticker cost. Replaces sticker now goes up to twenty-five, so that's twenty-five percent of the full price sticker. And that tailored version would provide eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. We also wanted the select board members to consider whether or not you wanted to change the senior sticker eligibility from seventy years or lower down to sixty-five years. When we spoke to the Treasure Club's office, it was the number one thing they had asked, was why is it at sixty-five, why is it seventy? The dollar licenses are seventy by sketchy, but this is something that is controlled here. If that were to happen, it would be a thirty-five dollar first sticker loss in revenue. So if fifty more residents became eligible, you'd lose seven fifty dollars. With a hundred more citizens became eligible, you'd lose thirty-five hundred dollars. So there really isn't a huge material impact if you were to make that change. So that's something else we wanted to consider. So this is how it breaks down by the different types of stickers. For the ten dollars and the fifteen dollars. As I said before, the new person, including benefits, so it's not, the, what, I don't want anyone to think, wow, these people can pay tons of money. The base value just between forty-six and seventy-three. Then you have pension, Medicare, labor's pension, health insurance, all of that has to be capitalized because the enterprise has to afford it to fall. So you just have straight up ten, straight up fifteen. Or you could do that tailored version, and you also have to consideration whether or not you want to lower the senior sticker fee eligibility from seventy years to sixty-five years. So I'm not sure whether one wants to go.
A lot of that.
Cool.
All right, anyone want to start off the discussion? I think you did exactly what we asked you to do, right, just perfect. We all, I think, came to the conclusion that we need somebody else there. Um, it's just a matter of how we're gonna find it.
I had one, but I threw it out. I had one that belonged to today.
Right, so, so we need to, we need to increase that. Um, Laura, do you wanna start us off? Do you have any questions or you wanna, wait a minute?
Uh, wait a minute, I wanna go back. I'm pulling up my documents so I can look at the fees, so I'll pass. Come back to me for a moment. If you don't mind, thank you.
Yeah. All right, there.
Uh, no, exactly right. We did all the things that we were using last time, we absolutely, absolutely, thank you for, you know, quite thank the people. Got it, right. Quite initiative. The only, the only thing that jumps out to me, and we can talk about, you know, what the rates should be, is the proposal, the, the, the concept of increasing the second ticket, the second sticker price. Out of the box, I think, I don't think, there's no way of knowing how that's gonna impact sales, first off. And second, I think it's a real inconvenience, because most families, what they're doing is, you know, one parent goes to the soccer field, another parent goes to the dump, and if you have to, you know, shop sell cars, it's more of a convenience. I don't think it impacts the delivery of things too. So I would, I would not like to see that be as big an impact, because I think it will, I think it'll actually reduce the numbers that are sold. Um, but the rest, I, I, I like the, a simple, I like the simple approach of it was a ten or fifty dollars across the board.
I agree. I think it could actually improve sales if you do that. Karen, Jim?
No, the one thing that I'm, I'm not seeing is, and I know we did this before, but.
No, the one thing that I'm not seeing is, and I know we did this before, but I think people don't understand that the recycling, we're not making money on it. We're actually paying.
Costs.
Yeah. So how much of what we're going to raise is simply a matter of how much column fees have gone up and how much recycling has gone down in terms of a preventive source. So that we're not trying to increase these fees just so we can have another person at the, at the transfer station. Although that's a really good reason to do it, but we're not. There are reasons for this above and beyond. Of course, there are. An additional.
And it's tough to follow only because it trends.
Yeah.
Now that fuel and oil is up, I'm making more scrap metal. We separated cardboard. They wanted the better Gims or a cardboard block. Serial box cardboard. That's why we separated that. They pay us for the wood cardboard.
Certain.
Right, yes. And that, that, that rate changes based on an OCC, a federal, a national, actually paper number, quality number. But right now they're paying to dispose of tin, glass, plastic.
And all the bottom stuff, we're going to have to pay more.
Yep. That's all by weight as well. Just same with the household trash as well. That just went up. Two D F S W, go ahead.
And just between July and August, the per, the fuel surcharge went up as well. One does.
So everything's up and some things are down.
It's, there's not trending in the rate direction.
Either way.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, also where my head is, I think, obviously we need a new person. We need to get the money in. So we can't hire that new person. I just, I keep getting more and more nervous about water fees, sewer fees. I mean, every, where every fee is going up. I know this is enterprise fund. How much money through cash and how much money we not earning in interest and we should be earning in interest on that through cash that we could be using or not using. I get that. The food pantry has doubled the amount of customers that they did before. So I get nervous putting it all together. That doesn't mean I still don't want to get the money that's there. I just, you know, yeah, forget the fee. It's just, it's really, I know the costs are there, but I guess table this for some other conversation. Try to find ways for us to be creative, just push it, push it out. But I do like the idea of having the seniors going down to sixty-five and that can certainly help. But that's maybe we need to get.
We need to get it out.
Maureen, anything yet?
Sure. Thank you. The three seventy-eight cost, guys, that didn't include either of these scenarios, correct? The annual, that was just based on current prices, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks. And then when they did the sixty-five to seventy senior adjustment or seventy to sixty-five, again, was that based on actual demographics or is that just a guesstimate? Like if fifty people signed up or what was that based on?
It was just to give you an analysis of what if fifty qualified, a hundred qualified.
So we really don't, we really don't know what that number is.
I don't know the demographic of between sixty-five and seventy-year-olds that actually purchase a transfer station sticker.
No, I know, but we, I don't expect you to know that, but should at least know a little bit of what that true impact would be, but I guess I'm more for simpler as well. I'm kind of adverse to, you know, really putting up that second sticker to that level. I think that's too high. So I would agree with Mrs. Canfield on, you know, the simpler approach. If we think sixty-seven thousand dollars is enough to bring on the additional employee. I have no problem with approving to bring on an additional employee because I think we need to have the appropriate staff to have the appropriate service level. So if it's that ten dollar across the board that's going to get us there and you're comfortable with that, you know, I'm comfortable with supporting that option.
Just a comment on the end point. So this is a one-time fee. It's an annual increase of ten or fifteen dollars, which is either eighty cents a month or a dollar, you know, ten cents a month. So the, it's not like your water rates are going up and every month you get, you have a thirty dollar increase that adds up to something. This is fairly minimal. So I, I agree with most of the comments here that it should be, you know, simple. A little bit of confusion on if we need to raise rates for these or we're going to lower for those, although I get the fixed income aspect of it. And just with your guys' comments on rates going up, I would say maybe fifteen dollars. You may have, you know, ten or twenty thousand dollars left over, so we don't have to raise them again right away. Then we can deal with fuel increases or, you know, some other unhidden thing that may come down the pipe. Again, it's a dollar and a quarter a month. It's not, it's not a ton. And if we want to throw in the senior aspect of it, I don't have a problem with that. I think Maureen brings up a good point. I was thinking the same thing. What if there's, you know, that population of our town is getting larger and larger and it is, it's thirty percent of our town. So if it's thirty percent of the users.
They already get it at seventy. So it's just the people that are in that pie here.
Right, so I don't know the number. You don't know the number, you know, if it's, if it's, you know, a thousand people. Would it, it's again five dollars, three percent, it'd be thirty-five thousand. No, but what is it per sticker?
It would be a loss of thirty-five dollars. So if you have eighteen, if you have eighteen thousand to nineteen thousand people in town, it would be the number of people that are aged sixty-five to seventy.
What is the loss per, what do you?
Thirty-five dollars.
You're going to decrease the sticker thirty-five dollars per sticker. Yeah, so that's a lot. I mean, if we're raising it fifteen rather than thirty, I, I.
I bring it forward for your discussion.
But it is the biggest complaint is what somebody said here from.
Turn it off, you're obvious. You get, you get the senior sticker discount sixty-five.
Maybe reduce it a smaller amount. Maybe increase it fifteen and reduce it fifteen or something.
But if we go across the board, it's all senior sticker, all seniors sticker, it would be nothing. Right? If we increase all stickers to fifteen dollars.
Right, well, that's a good question. What's your math? Is it going down thirty-five from the current number or thirty-five from the new number?
It would be the difference between the new single sticker to the senior rate. So right now there's a thirty-five dollar differential at the current rate, so that it's, no matter where you set it, it would still be a thirty-five dollar differential. So right now it's fifty-five dollars per senior sticker, it's ninety dollars per single.
Right now it's fifty, right now it's fifty-five and ninety?
Yes.
And you want to reduce fifty-five by thirty-five more?
No, I'm saying if you reduced the, the age eligibility from seventy to sixty-five, every person that qualifies would get that.
I get you. It's gonna be sixty-five dollars.
How many stickers do we sell to people over seventy right now?
One thousand three hundred and eighty-seven.
So what could be more? Thousand, 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 it could be five thousand.
What could be, no, another thousand people up.
Well, you, you sell thirty-nine, one, three thousand nine hundred, meaning four thousand, I guess, stickers.
Yeah, right. Right.
I wouldn't be surprised if it's a thousand people up and that's thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah. Exactly. No, but you just said the entire, everybody over seventy right now. Oh, oh, I saw just.
No, that's fine.
Sorry, just caught up.
So you think that twenty-five percent of the single sticker share will be all that are aged sixty-five or seventy?
I don't know. This is probably ask you the SATs, right?
But I mean, if that's the case in your life, though, it would be as high as the five thousand.
I would say we raise it fifteen and then we reduce the seniors where it is.
You have a senior age limit? I don't know. I, I would disagree with that. Only in that the feedback from the staff, you want to be responsive and I mean, that's pretty. If it's raised at the bar, if it raises our attention, this is what they're marrying a lot of, is that there's a pinch point to Niners point. They keep raising, you can see, it's just a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here. You're on fixed income, that's a lot of it. So I, I think that it's.
So you want to do both? You want to do fifteen?
I would raise it to fifteen and I would, I would reduce the rate to about that age. Not that I'm getting close to that age, but.
And what do you think?
Why? Because I'm over sixty-five? That's huge. You have to reduce something. You just have to.
Yes, Steve, what do you think?
Is there a win? Should create a new category from sixty-five to seventy and just make half? Does that appease everybody?
Because.
So they're going to save something, but you're not going to lose a company.
The treasure collectors office would like to kill you if you do that. That's one more level to try to explain to people of the counter.
Oh, true. Because I was just going to say, if you, if we said to anyone over sixty-five, we're not going to apply the new increase to you.
Right.
Oh, right, right. Well, just take.
I'm not sixty-eight.
I'm still there.
I, I think, I think what we're doing is we're trying to create revenue to hire somebody and we're just alluding it by some other number. I mean, we might as well raise it to twenty dollars if you want, if you want to do that other thing. Because if it's thirty-five thousand dollars, we're back down at the, the lower level hiring somebody and you don't have any pushing for any other increases.
We won't be able to take that.
Andrew, what do you think? Thoughts?
Incrementalist, I mean, I'd go to sixty-eight. There's no way that there's a thousand that are there and that will remind us from years forth. I mean, because the collectors office is going to be telling us that's one or two years and then next year, hey, now we know. Kathy was the third business. She could try and run the numbers to see how many birthdays we could get.
Maureen?
I don't think we need to lower it from seventy to sixty-five. I think we're taking a lot of time on something that's not going to have a huge effect. I mean, it's nice. I don't, I mean, Karen did mention that you're hearing, the staff is hearing concerns. Is that true or is, you know, where did we come up with the idea to lower it just to be in line with ARP and the rest of the world or what were your thoughts there?
That was feedback. I'm sorry. It was feedback from the treasure collectors office.
Okay.
Do we have a senior sticker for beaches? Well, then we're actually giving them a break on the transfer station. We don't give them on the beach.
It would be a rabbit hole.
All right, let's make a motion. I think we all agree on the fifteen dollars.
I, I will move to increase the residential sticker, replacement sticker, additional sticker and senior sticker fees by fifteen dollars. This change to be effective for the twenty twenty-three calendar year stickers.
Second, by somebody, second, my member Goodrich. Further discussion. Saying done, we'll call a vote.
Can I just ask a question from the application office? You said that you didn't want a transfer station additional fee, but we said in the motion an additional sticker fee would be increased. So I'm just confused by that. What is.
No, the motion, the motion they read was correct. They didn't want to double the additional sticker fee, which was the tailored option.
Okay.
So there was, there was already an existing additional sticker fee. So that one will go up by fifteen dollars.
Yeah, the additional sticker fee will go up the same fifteen dollars as this one is.
By fifteen.
Correct, but it will not be.
It will not be that tailored version, which would have doubled it.
It's going to double it.
Is that what we thought?
I, that's what I, I thought that there was some concern that if you raise the additional sticker fee by fifteen dollars, you're going to depress the number of additional stickers that you sell.
Yeah.
Wasn't that what we. Well, my comment was because the hybrid was significantly more than that.
Yeah, but it's going, it's not going from twenty-five to fifty. It's going from forty to fifty. Because Nancy already put the extra fifteen in it.
Forty to fifty.
Because it's, it's twenty-five now.
It's twenty-five.
Right, and it's going to go to forty if we raise every sticker by fifteen dollars. And Nancy's increment is just going to add another ten to it. So what is the revenue from the second stickers? How many second stickers?
One thousand two hundred and thirty-three. It would be going from twenty-five dollars to forty dollars for the second sticker.
How much revenue? Fifteen, a thousand, so fifteen thousand dollars.
No, no. Twenty-five dollars.
Yeah.
There's a thousand stickers, fifteen bucks.
It would generate about eighteen thousand five hundred dollars of revenue.
Well, I think for the sake of consistency, why would we raise one and not raise the other?
Well, what's going to happen is it's human, right? So
It's the human.
The family's already paying fifteen more. Are they going to say, uh, you know?
Well, they might. And we'll find out. There'll be fights all over.
Well, then, I guess, then what will happen is this rate increase will certainly be to go down.
Until they come rushing in for their second sticker.
So if they don't.
Right, so for a family, what we're really saying is it's thirty dollars if you, that's going to be a bind to your household. Unless the majority of people buy a second sticker.
And if we keep the second sticker at twenty-five, that income will go down to eighteen thousand dollars. The second sticker is a convenience.
Right, a sound of necessity.
Absolutely not, right?
Right, which makes you wonder what's the price point that causes that convenience to not be that is going to make it in that.
Three hundred dollars, you know.
Also, it's only eighty-seven cents. What should matter? Of course, if you're the type of person that can afford to get the two, then why, why would you not do that? It's an extra fifteen dollars to get the two. Right? I mean, it's convenience fee, fifteen dollars. It's not worth my time, but.
I don't think there's price sensitivity somehow.
They don't, right, those folks that are doing it are less price sensitive.
Yes.
Just so we all know, I think the motion is, is.
Raise them up.
Okay.
So we'll.
We'll call a vote. Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Tomlin?
Yes.
Are you leaving? I had a quick question for you. Can we get an update the next meeting on the reservoir, the status of the expansion of the reservoir?
Pretty much on hold right now. We're waiting till the. I had one of my engineers today working at the transfer station, you know, got on his shift over there, so we haven't been able to put any real work on it.
Yeah, but if you just know where it is and where it's standing, that'd be great. After, we won't have a meeting until when after time you?
It's the twentieth after time we next live.
The next day. Yay. Okay, that's it.
Did you want to miss any here or no? You know who I'm missing here.
Okay, so now we have the next, the whole opening discussion is.
Poor Sean does. Just want to let the board know the pedestrian flasher out front they had what months ago, Sean?
Yep.
We couldn't get passed. We couldn't get, and the last month Sean has been beating up the company to get it repaired. We was able to get it all repaired, fixed it back on, on the time to start school tomorrow, so.
Good job, Sean. Great job on that now.
The neighbors. So.
So they're agreeing today or.
Just pure and I say it.
All right, so now we have a, a board of contract for a generator.
Yeah, very quickly, this was a maintenance need from the year one of the facility study that we did. Higher garage replacements, generators, pure to the state contract. The three prices ranging from fifty-three to eight one four fifty. The three prices ranging from fifty-three, eight, one, four, fifty, to fifty-eight, six, twenty-eight, thirty. Uh, the funding will come from that and part of Kevin's, uh, facilities budget. The existing generator only powers the highway department, it's twenty-four years old. The new generator will power both the highway and the training grounds building, so they'll all have power. The power is on right now, they have to care about the highway, highway side. Uh, and the offices will now have power, and we are putting a new phone system in down there, as part of the, uh, we have the phone systems. That's in the office, which is in the tree, the grounds building, that's going to need a generator to operate also. So this new generator will replace existing twenty-four year old generator in one of both buildings instead of this one.
And you mentioned funding, what?
This was funded, uh, first through the first year of the facility study that we did, and we funded that a year ago, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two town meeting, uh, Kevin's requesting on this.
Is that paid for the generator?
That's paid for the generator, it's not paying for all of it, uh, because since we did that, obviously prices have gone up. So he's also paying a little bit out of his facilities budget.
Questions for Jim? Seeing none, have a motion?
Move toward a contract with a generator for the permanent installation of a Kohler sixty RCL natural gas generator at two hundred and eighty volt at sixty-eight captain Chris Roden, meaning not, not to exceed fifty-three thousand eight hundred forty dollars fifty cents.
Second?
Second.
By Ms. Karen, we'll call a vote.
Ms. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Great, unanimous, thank you, Jim. The next topic of discussion we started last week is the use of the four hundred thousand dollars for the Toll Brothers. I had asked that we allocate some of that money to, uh, uh, get some bathrooms on, on our beaches. Um, we didn't like going, we wanted some discussion on that, but not a ton. And, uh, I guess part of the question is, do we want to use this for, um, uh, JV baseball field is being made, do we want to use it on some other field, if we can't have an idea that there's other fields that need help? Um, and, um, or we're really not pressed to do anything with it, it's, it's there at our use. Um, the only other information I'll say, uh, I spoke with Jim and Nancy after the fact, and there actually is already some money left aside from the two hundred thousand dollars that they gave us for bathroom facility. We used, uh, fifty-eight thousand maybe, as he said, for, uh, sixty for the water study. Um, but that other money is there as well, so we do have some money to start that project, uh, regardless of this.
So it's four hundred plus?
Yeah, okay. Or you want, yeah.
Yeah, how much money is left over from the, um, restroom fund?
About a hundred and forty thousand.
Oh, that's a lot. So my only question was Jim and Nancy, I was looking through the contract, and I don't see anywhere or an amendment, or did we have to have an amendment done that stated this four hundred thousand dollar gift, because we do remember the original one was the building of the Wampanoak Park, and that's all outlined, but I didn't see any amendment with.
Yeah, the board did, the board did an amendment that allowed, cut us the four hundred thousand dollars to be used for ball fields. Construction, reconstruction, maintenance, blah, 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 uh, but it's specific to ball fields. Uh, I've reached out to Toll Brothers representative to ask if they would agree to amend it to say ball fields and other recreational projects.
Okay.
So to give the board kind of a wide latitude where they wanted to spend it. He thinks Toll Brothers would be amenable to that, but he hasn't been backing at this point.
Okay, so we don't have it in writing yet, okay, that's. I'll be crazy. Um, but I, but I, I sort of, you know, uh, Tony, I kind of agree with you, I'm not committed to giving it all to the ball field project, uh, just because it, you know, I, I wouldn't mind giving a portion of it, but I do think we have other sources, and if this was something that was specifically meant to kind of support that area that was disturbed, you know, I think we should try to keep a good portion of the four hundred thousand in that neighborhood, if you will.
Good point. Andrew, any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree, I think in the spirit of the, uh, you know, of the initial gift that was, you know, for improving the fields for this, for the Wampanoak, which floods and the whole area over there. Um, is in disarray, so that's why I, I brought up last meeting, just yield improvements writ large. Um, I mean, I still think we can split this three ways, that if you wanted, you can give a portion of it to the, to the ninety-foot CPC, you could spend some money on some, uh, small improvements for the long way. If you wanted to do certain enough money to do at least one bathroom, there's not, no other. Options to kind of go on forth, and, and it kind of, we're in the spirit of what the gift was for, and we're doing a lot of different, um, things spread out across the town.
No. The only thing I would add is a little bit of it wants to, was it meant, and Tony, you're probably the most able to answer this question, was the intention to be compensating the neighborhood to, to create neighborhood improvements, um, because of disruption, disconstruction? Or was it an acknowledgement at the time that we were really short fields? And that maybe we could, we could, because originally we were going to add one behind Wampanoak.
Right.
Um, my recollection was it, it wasn't really so much a neighborhood, in fact, for me, it was a community. In fact, we, I, I, do you have a.
Yeah, I, I would say, uh, I would say that the bathroom component was a neighborhood, because we were saying Egypt Beaches walkable and that be close there. The field one, I would agree with you, was not, with, the only reason we did the Wampanoak is because it abutted the property. We're like, you have the equipment there, just go and knock down those reeds and level it off.
Right, right. Right.
And they decided they didn't want to do that, or try and bring, but four hundred thousand dollars more, here's some money, do what you want with it, and so on. Yeah, I do the Google, please.
I'm sorry, just a follow-up on it, so if that is the case, um, to Andrew's point, then I think to, we do have needs in all of our fields, and I think to put it all into the justice we feel is, is, is not as scary of what we want to do, we want, I mean, we definitely want to add the field. But there's a lot of work that needs to be done, even if it's in, we talked about, you know, putting redarals or whatever it is we need to do for irrigation, that kind of stuff. And we need to look at that and maybe put some of that in that bucket.
But, yeah, I, I agree, I think you make a point, that there's no pressure for us to use it for this field.
Right.
They, the CPC has the money, they can pay for it, they're not upset paying for it, they're just asking, hey, what are you guys going to do with that money? Um, so we do not have to make a decision tonight. Um, but what I would suggest is that at some point in time, we start looking into what to do with that, I mean, you know, you know, you spoke to some people about some needs, you know, or your water irrigation ideas as well. You know, maybe start acting on some of that stuff.
Perhaps we can put it on the retreat, I think that.
Maybe. Yes.
There was an amendment, a de- amendment to the agreement, and it's dated July twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen. And it says, whereas the town and Toll Brothers are both desirous of amending section one, page two of the agreement, whereby the Toll Brothers have paid the town the sum of four hundred thousand dollars on a before August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, for the purposes of town constructing, installing, repairing, renovating, or reconstructing all fields herein after the ball field project, in lieu of the Toll Brothers performing any of the work and construction of the ball field and other related work behind Wampanoak School as more particularly set forth in section one, page two of the agreement. So I, I think it's clear, at least by this, in this amendment, that the four hundred thousand should go to constructing, installing, repairing, renovating, and reconstructing the ball fields. That's where I'm interested in that extra hundred and fifty they can mention, like the two hundred.
That's bull, only because we asked them to say that, they, that, they don't care.
Well, we signed it.
I know, but we said put this one anyway.
They were going, they were going to build a field.
Yes, I know it.
And then it's totally talked about.
And it wasn't big enough.
Wasn't going to be big enough.
It wasn't going to be regulation field.
So we, we asked, well, can we just have the money?
Right.
For fields?
Yes.
They said, fine.
Yes.
So it is right now limited to fields. As I said, I asked them, would they be willing to say, or other recreational uses? They're asking, yeah, probably, but I, I got to hear back. And the original, when we originally talked about using the four hundred, we were talking about renovating and fixing the field behind the old gates. And then the senior project and that might be, be popular at some point in the future, so we aren't going to spend a lot of money renovating that field.
Well, you're right, right now it does say that, but I think that was our, I don't think.
Maybe, no, but, and I'm, all I'm saying is the other issue I have related to the bathroom is I would like to hear from the beach commission as part of a larger plan for all of the beaches as to what amenities they think they could be put at different beaches. But I'm happy for that, that's an extra hundred and fifty thousand that's potentially available. And we do know that CPC can't pay for certain things related to fields, including maintenance and that sort of thing, so to the extent that if we don't give them the four hundred, it's likely that other projects that might come to them won't come to them, if they're, you know, smaller.
Good point.
And ju- just for, I mean, clarity and making sure that we're done. Um, I know we don't have to do anything with this, but right now, today, but it would be, I think it would be beneficial, even if we do, hey, a hundred, we knew there's a hundred thousand to go to recreation in CPC, like, where can we go? Is the first, you know, I talked about the whole time thing.
No.
What's the board going to approve for improvements, two hundred? I mean, they, so the answers are going to be totally different of kind of what's going forward. Um, I mean, so I think if we knew, hey, at least two hundred thousand to go to improvements, or, then we have those real conversations of here's precisely where now it's going to go, so we're not just, oh.
Last question.
Well, why don't I suggest we let this
Set up.
lie tonight, not make a decision, not worry about the ninety-foot field, can't run a rate one, if they're going to do another turf field somewhere, I mean, there's all kinds of things that can't pay for that this money could go to. If we just give it to CPC, it's going to be, oh, there's restrictions. Is that, we agree with that? Okay. All right. Let's pass on. Um, any comments? Steve, did you come for that, or?
He's just visiting. I'm so happy to hear that.
All right, the next topic is new business, we have a one-day liquor license?
Sure.
Have a motion for, uh?
John, that's a very.
Uh, move that's likely to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Simply Good Catering for private event on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, from ten thirty AM until two thirty PM, the Sitcha Maritime Center. A further uh, move that's pure servers for private event on October fifteenth, twenty.
I, I don't, I don't think that's right. I'm sorry.
This is, uh, around like. September twenty-third, twenty-fourth, is that true?
Yes, September twenty-third. Malaysi fish market. Yeah, I think that's from last meeting.
Cool.
Let's see.
No, I got the wrong one, I did, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Sorry, my bad.
That's the one you need. No worries, no worries.
Straight down.
Straight down.
Move that the slight word, uh, approve a one-day wine and malt license to the ladies fish market at eight Allen Place, for special events, September twenty-third and September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, from seven PM until ten thirty PM.
Second by?
Seven.
Mrs. Conlon. Uh, further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a vote.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
No, neither.
Malayas?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Right. Um, before we do the next one, I kind of want to just, uh, make a quick comment about Malayas, I went to a fundraiser there um, for the fishing industry, um, a week or so ago, and it was, it was phenomenal, great turnout, it's, it's for, uh, all the, the local fishermen there, and they give out, uh, fish to some of the facilities that need it around town. Um, again, great turnout, fun, uh, fun afternoon, and a great facility to have that. But when I was there, so, so Malayas gives away all of the seafood for his events, um, and it's a raw bar, and it's fish tacos, and it's even fried chicken. And when I was there, I ran into other people that just said, um, that he had done the same thing for their events, there was a veterans' event that went on there, and when he founded ours, a veterans' event, he, you know, he didn't charge up for food, so, so, we've got a great location there, right, that's spectacular, and we'll probably get there, up on the roof, you can, you can almost see, uh, Ireland. Um, and, uh, great food, great, uh, manufacturing capacity there that helps the whole fishing industry, and just a really generous business, so, um, again, kudos to, to him, his team, and all the local restaurants in town that do so much for um, the people that need it around town, and it just became very apparent to me, it, it goes a lot deeper than you think it does. Um, and, uh, and actually, I was talking to someone about the inn the other day, and what they do. So we're really lucky with, with all of the commercial aspects in town, and to so many things that you don't know about, you don't hear about, um, and they never talk about it, and, and it's just made me proud of, of the town and all the issues, and so thank you, Jody, for all you're doing, all the other, all the other people, and look at all these restaurants, it's the same thing, yeah? Mill War Food, et cetera, et cetera. All right, that being said, we'll move on to, uh, vote discussion of our, uh, board and committee appointments. So the first one on here is the Waterways. You guys complicated about as much as you could. Um.
It's twenty-four.
So we have we have two full-time positions open or two reservations. And we have two full-time people that are up for renewal. And we have three part-time people that would like to move up, associate positions that would like to move up, and Kevin Norton's a new person that would like to move in as some role as well. So who's the liaison, Maury, you're the liaison, right?
Yep.
So why don't we try and deal with them in, well, I don't know how to deal with, because.
Well, I would, I would, I would recommend that if people do not have an issue, that we renew Brian and Rick Murray. Um, and take care of that first, um, they're both extremely stellar committee members, Brian and his fiscal acumen is um, indispensable for that committee, he does a lot of work with Nancy and really breaks it down and explains everything really well. Um, for everyone to understand, you know, financially where they all stand, he's a great negotiator, and I think Rick, um, obviously with his perspective and his time, I think they both um, would do us well to renew both of them, and then we can deal with the other two open positions by moving some of the other associates up, and keep in mind that all of those associates, their terms really aren't up until twenty twenty-four, so there's an opportunity for one of them to move up next year if somebody else resigns, right? So putting that out there as well for everyone to think about. But I'd like to make a motion to renew, if you will all, um.
Can you make that motion?
Sure. Uh, move to reappoint Brian Kelly and Rick Murray to the Waterways Commission as full members for a term of three years or until a successor is named. A completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, further discussion, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Do you want to do a roll call vote at the end of all appointments?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, it's on the last ticket.
Okay, so we've got, uh, so now we have two more full-time appointments, and we've got four people that we're talking about, that's, um, if I get this right, David Dineen, TJ Mobesti, Brian Cronin, and Kevin Norton. All are interested in moving up to full-time.
Well, on point of clarification, Kevin hasn't even served, I think, as an associate member yet.
Correct.
He's in New Orleans.
Okay.
And we did, we did find out his, his strength was, uh, he's a commercial fisherman.
Yep.
And we found out that one of the other members is a commercial fisherman as well, so they do have representation on the board. So would someone like to make a motion for one of those four people to be a, uh, full-time?
So.
First, I, I, I think, yeah, Maury, you, you know it better than us.
I mean, they're all great, I mean, I think Dave brought up a good point, right, he stepped up, so, and his. He stepped up, so and has really stepped in to fill in. So let's, maybe we can take care of Dave first and then talk about TJ and Brian a little bit.
Anyone have any problem with, with David? Okay, so tell us TJ and Brian. I think, do I get the sense that Kevin would take it associate member? Are we all kind of on that page? For the new person?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay. So that being said, the last decision is.
Yeah, and I would strongly suggest that anyone that's already current associate should not be, we've brought the current applicant. Do you have?
Yeah, I know, I agree with you.
Okay, so Brian and TJ are the two people. TJ's the coast guard member, Brian does a lot of stuff on the South River.
And I would just add that TJ's probably one of the newer members to the committee. He's got excellent, excellent credentials. Brian has served for a while and he is interested in getting back as a full-time member. In my opinion, I would recommend to the committee that we support Brian and David and, and, you know, have TJ have another year or so under his belt as an associate on this committee to continue to work alongside, cause he's a terrific asset as well. But keep in mind that his terms still, all their terms still go out to twenty twenty-four. So they'll still be there.
Can you make a motion?
Sure.
Steve, how do you get?
I would like to move to appoint Brian Cronin and Dave Dineen as full-time members to the Waterways Commission for a term of three years or until successors are named. In completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second one, Mr. Goodrich. Further discussion, seeing none. And can we have a motion to move Kevin Norton up to an associate position?
Yep. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Move, move to appoint Kevin Norton to the Waterways Commission as an associate member for a term of three years until successors named in completion of a conflict of interest online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second, second one, Ms. Conley, further discussion, seeing none. Did you get all that, Maura?
Got it all.
Perfect. All right. And we'll, we'll do the, we'll call vote at the end of all of them, right?
Correct.
All right, so Con, Con Con is the next one.
It's tab twelve.
Okay, so. So if I can push on this one. So this is one where we have two renewals, which is Penny and Andrew. And we have a few people looking to get on, there's no openings. And there are some people who are looking to get on there. Christine Becker, that was her third choice, Greg Fleming. I think it was his first choice and Patrick Canning is first choice. And we've put him on the Sister City to social bridge. So the part of the discussion was, you know, Penny's been on there for a long time. She served five terms, fifteen years. Does a spectacular job. You know, whether we give someone else a chance, like her spot. Andrew's been there on one term. And, and I think there was only really one, wasn't, correct me if I'm wrong, was there only really one other strong candidate that, that was really looking into be Con Con?
Did Christine Becker come in? I don't remember.
I.
She did, but she was more interested in what the cultural context, right?
Yeah, I think.
Which she was appointed to.
And then Patrick Canning.
It's a second choice.
Yes, yeah. And then the Gregory Fleming, I remember talking about that, that he might be appropriate for the zoning board of appeals. If he's looking to, you know, make a contribution to that as well. Yeah, and I, I will say in favor, in Kenny's favor in particular, I know it's, she's been on for a long time, but it is one of those commissions where experience does matter a lot. And having some sort of institutional history matters a lot. And so I'm very much in favor, she's got some projects she's still working on. I'm very much in favor of reappointing her. And I think that Andrew was instrumental in getting the proposal before this board to do the community farming up at Appleton Field. And I would think he would like to continue with that. And I, I'd like to have that continuity as well. So that's my true sense.
And I, I agree with you. And I, I don't have a problem with either of those, but there's always gonna be that situation.
But not all committees have quite as much.
Con Con is always gonna have
Yeah.
big stuff going on and, you know, there's never, there's never a good break here. But, but Penny had some good points that she actually, she's here, she's willing to do all the legwork that needs to be done for these projects. She knows the town inside and out. I mean, there's assets there that I agree, just like a Frank Spelt, you know, he's been there for, for longer than Penny. So what I just wanna make sure that we don't deter people from wanting to move on because they say this committee's been that way, it's never gonna change.
Yeah. But Andrew was new, so, you know, Penny, he seems to be, I think it's not an easy committee to kind of get your feet on the ground.
Yeah, because developers trying to slip things in left and right. It's good to have some.
Maybe you would do such a thing.
In the last five years for this committee, we have had a really, Jennifer Foley, Andrew Gallagher and just
Yeah, that's.
Another point.
And did you have a comment?
No, I'm more, I'm one second. I mean, I'm dealing with both, I mean, yeah, we're in, Andrew Gallagher. The Appleton Field, I mean, it was wonderful work and I think it needs to be, it's not done yet. And Penny is just fabulous. And yeah, the other, the other folks too, I mean, they, there are other choices in other committees that they might be able to hopefully get them involved in down the road. I mean, Greg Fleming was fabulous. Which I just, because there's a few other committees, not zoning that he wanted, but there could be other opportunities as well, so.
I think he was an attorney and may have some openings on zoning the next cycle.
Yeah.
And could certainly keep them in the loop.
Yeah, that's, that's funny. You know, he wants to do something now, he put his name on this, on this group. You know, who knows what he'll wanna do in a year and who knows if he'll be opening in zoning. Maura, did you have a?
Yeah, I completely agree. I mean, Penny's historical knowledge is bar none and she's a workhorse, right? And this committee really needs a workhorse. I know a resident stood up earlier and was concerned about the, oh, no, not earlier, but last meeting. Sorry, I watched the last meeting before this meeting, so stood up earlier and talked about resources. So Penny's a great resource to kind of augment that, that void that we have in staffing. But this is a question for Mrs. Cantfield, you know, when we look through the, we look at adding associate positions to the Con Con because we, we've been, you know, ever since I've been on the board, this issue always comes up here, you know? The folks on Con Con, it's a unique skill set. It's one that is learned, it takes a while. And, you know, similar to Waterways, we have that nice associate position where folks have a couple of years to, you know, get, get some experience and understand the scope and, and they can move in there. So I don't know if we're looking at expanding it at all.
So I did not ask for to ask that question. But yeah, so I, two things I just wanna bring to the board's attention, I was gonna mention a liaison. If, one is that in talking with the chair on, there has been a conversation of, you know, what, if doing exact, adding associate positions to train up, you know, some of the folks have been there for a long time. So I think that conversation's been maybe up a bit, so thanks for that. The other thing I wanted to mention is I have a, I'm waiting for the chair to get back about having a conversation within Con Con to expand into a subcommittee that will help sort of wrap their arms or get more bodies basically and more brains and more hands to work on the open space management stuff. We have all this property that Con Con is responsible for overseeing. And we, you know, we got a more interlaken, we cut Sunset on the horizon, we cut Porter Street. But there's a real opportunity to sort of create a subcommittee without having to point more bodies. And, and I'm waiting for the chair to speak back on that right now. So it's a liaison splash. But I, but I literally, speaking with Mr. Fleming, I, that was my note, is he got very subtle. See, would be really useful in that conversation. So there might be opportunities in either of those narratives for other folks to get engaged. And then I agree, you know, the legacy of Penny's work with a lot, I wanna stress, would be very hard to replace right now.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is that we want to reappoint Penny and Andrew and Luke Crowe, another place for these other strong candidates. Is that on there?
Yes.
So can I have a motion that says that?
Move to reappoint Penny Scott Pipes and Andrew Gallagher to Conservation Commission for a term of three years or until the successor is named in completion of the Conflict of Interest Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second one, Mr. Goodrich, further discussion? Mr. Yorick?
I just wanted to state after the last meeting, the gentleman that was the attorney that also had interest in the zoning board of appeals, I don't know if you noticed, I followed him out of the meeting and chatted with him a little bit about the zoning board because there is a, an awful chance that we may lose the attorney that we have on that board. And he said he would gladly go on the zoning board if something came up. So it's not like you're pushing him aside. I, I think that you're making the right move here by putting these people back in again. Does take three years to learn kind of what you're doing. So Andrew is definitely getting it now. And Penny should be here longer than all of us. She just does a tremendous amount of work, so. But I think that gentleman will come right back in next year if that position opens up.
Great, nice. So I had a second and we'll do a roll call vote afterwards. Next committee is the Sister City for King Verde. We had, we, we put all the other candidates on before, so it's just the two candidates that we had this evening. From what I heard, everyone agreed that they should be on there. Any discussion?
Really, just, I thought you made a really, sorry, I think. Yeah, you made a really good point about, you know, I was trying to, who was the other person that's not a resident? I don't remember.
I think there was, we had one or
There are quite a few.
One or two others, yeah.
There were quite a few, but if that's the way to charge this written report.
Oh, no, I, I agree with the premise and I think that, you know, I did have a chance to speak to Ms. Dre, you know, about organizing, telling her about liaisons and, you know, they're, they're gonna hit their ground running. And I think she's just got a firm handle on, on keeping community focus, so.
And I would like to see more of, I, I, you know, I think it's great that there's a couple of people that are reaching out to, to get people that are just interested in the whole movement. But I would like to get a stronger, I'd like that a majority of people be in front of the town. But these two are, you know, impeccable candidates.
It's hard to, hard to, but working through all the patients. Would you like it more?
Yes, please.
To, to move to appoint Teresa Burnett and John Montero to Sister City King Verde Committee for a term of two years or until the successor is named in completion of the Conflict of Interest Online Training is completed within thirty days. Second.
Second one, Ms. Conley, further discussion? Seeing none. The next topic is the MBTA Advisory Board.
Karen volunteered to fill that role. Al Banger was the previous liaison. I sent an email out to everybody. Karen responded.
He suggested that, and a best, the best of us. I think I just.
You have some kinds of. So many more to.
So I'm filling that out for you right now.
Move to appoint Karen Cantfield to the King Verde Advisory Board for a term of one year.
Four years.
Or until the King Verde TA is never on, until the successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law On- Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second by, second, Mr. Goodrich, further discussion? Seeing none, we will move on to DEI staffer representative. Maura, you go.
So we, yep, so six tiger from the fire department was unable to continue due to his schedule. He's, you know, working a lot of overtime and different schedulings prohibited, prohibited him from really, you know, representing the staff as well as he had wanted to. So Bob did reach out and Lillian Cruz is very excited to join the committee. So I would move to appoint Lillian to the DEI committee.
As a staff member for a term of two years, for the successor's name in completion of the Conflict of Interest Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley, further discussion?
She's fabulous.
Yes.
She was unbelievable.
Awesome. So now we have Public Building Commission.
We've got the Recreation Commission first.
Well, do we have?
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna.
It's not on the, on the agenda. Well, it's on the motion.
Okay, so we can go, we can do the Recreation Commission first. So this is one that we didn't have any, any applicants for, so we're just renewing all of that.
Correct.
I have a motion for, and I'll just say, before we do that, the committee's awesome.
Yeah.
They've got a great support staff with Maura and Kevin and, and they're all really into all the events they're going to.
Isn't it still there?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Move to reappoint Mike Connish, who will accord Dr. Chase and Jeff Coney up to the Recreation Commission for a term of three years or until the successor is named in completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Training is completed within thirty days. Second.
Second one, Ms. Conley, further discussions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Building, Public Building Commission. Stephanie Holland for a term of three years.
She's outstanding, so I would be happy to nominate her. Move to reappoint Stephanie Holland to the Public Building Commission for a term of three years or until the successor is named in completion of the Conflict of Interest Online Training is completed within thirty days.
Second. Second one, Mr. Goodrich, further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to Historical Commission, Robert Brand.
I don't have any applicants, I think.
No. All of these last ones are renewals with no applicants.
All right, Mr. Brand does a lot of voluntary yield for those buildings. Do we have a motion?
Please.
Move to reappoint Robert Brand to the Recreation Commission for a term of three years or until the successor is named in completion of the Conflict of Interest Training Department for the thirty days.
Second. Second one, Mr. Goodrich, further discussion? Seeing none, on the Historical Commission, who's gonna be a gentleman?
Yeah, so.
Margaret Deale.
He's an associate member, which I like a lot.
Please.
Move to reappoint Arthur Beal, who's the Recreation Commission's associate member for a term of three years or until the successor is named in completion of the Conflict of Interest Online Training is completed within thirty days. So.
Second one, Ms. Conley, further discussion? Seeing none, we've got Water Resource Commission, there's two people. Andrew, you want to?
Yeah, Mr. Rippon, Jackman, and Bruce Harvey to the Water Resource Commission for a term of three years or until the successor is named in completion of the Conflict of Interest Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second by Ms. Cantfield, further discussion? Seeing none. Now we'll have a motion to vote on all of the appointments that we just went over. Roll call vote.
Mr. Vinyan.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Ms. Cantfield.
Yes, abstaining from the MBTA vote.
And Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Great, thank you, guys. Next is other business, do we have any liaison reports?
I have a short one, really short.
Go ahead.
We've had several applications come in for our small grants program through the Affordable Housing Trust. It was launched about, I wanna say maybe two thousand people at the most. And the Planning Office and the Town Administrator's Office has been busy with inquiries, so we're really excited about that.
Karen?
Very quickly, I just wanted the board to be aware of two things. One is we received late, late breaking suggestions for for ways to improve the recommended charter revisions from the Chair of the Library Trustees. And because it is too late for any of those review of advisory or booklet or any of that to include their recommendations, there's a potential that some, a couple of amendments will be offered that we presented to the moderators. We need to see if they're within the scope. I think a couple of them are just, oh, yeah, that's a better idea kind of thing, sounds substantial. If they're substantial, we won't be able to address them, but that's going to be worked out in the next week or so. And I just wanted to make a note, it was brought up during this, to see, I'm sorry, the Cape Verde conversation about heritage stays, it's kind of brought up. The EDC has reached out to the chamber to try to better coordinate our commissions and committees with the chamber's efforts for heritage stays. So that next year, the goal would be that it would be much more of a community-like thing. And, you know, if it's a, all three sister cities do something somewhere, those talks have been done between the chamber and our development commission. And, and we need a really big. I know.
Um, you have a?
No. Well, he's meeting tomorrow, I want resources and maybe a meeting next week, so.
I will remind everybody that September 19th is a special town meeting. It's a Monday night. There are 14 articles on there, six of them on consent agenda. So it should be a relatively short meeting. One of the big topics of discussion is deciding on the site for the water treatment plant. And that will be, it's a very short, it will be discussed. So that's very important that we proceed that project. Then there's some CPC articles, a few capital articles, a few zoning articles. But it should be a relatively short one. Town, town, uh, town meeting at once. Um, the moderates meeting is Wednesday? What is it?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. So that is next, a week from today. Um, anyone that wants to go, that is it? What time is it?
The 3:00.
Reap, reap, dear. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to bring up is, I just want to, um, mention Linda Hayes and the Senior Center. This Friday, past Friday afternoon, they had a concert there. We passed, we all passed the thing for it. And I went to it and one of the band members is the chef, Fred, who plays guitar. He has a band there and there were probably over 150 people on the lawn there. And it was a beautiful night and they were playing, you know, 60s and 70s music. And it was just, it's exactly what we wanted that to be. There were, there were kids running around playing bocce, the music was playing. They were serving hot dogs and people were able to use the facility. And it just, when I was looking at it and seeing all these people having fun and having a reason to get out and enjoy themselves. And, you know, it was, they're almost seniors, you know, other than, other than me. And I'm almost there. But it was, it, I just felt, I just felt that that was the picture of what we wanted that building to do. And it was great. And thank you for everyone that, that drew that, was involved with that. Served the, the hot dogs and the, the, whatever, watermelon slices and, you know, Fred and his band for playing and whether for organizing the whole thing, so. Goodness for that, good for that. And then, of course, I went to the fish bar.
How was it?
That was awesome, awesome. So it was a, a good situated night. So any other news before we go to the minutes? Will, any correspondence or comments or?
There is. I have two correspondence, Mr. Chair. Um, one, congratulations to Jody McDonough, who's been on behalf of Secretary of State William F. Galvin and the State Historical Records Advisory Board and the National Historical Publications and Records Commission. Um, she has, they've accepted her application into the Roving Archivist Program. So it sounds like there hopefully will be some more grant opportunities from that. So congratulations to Jody. They'll be in touch with her. And then just lastly, the Cedar Point Association did send us a note on August 30th just advising us of all the terrific contributions that they give to different organizations throughout town. So not only do they, you know, advocate on behalf of seawalls, but collectively they've given $4,781 to a variety of different organizations throughout the town. So we thank them for their generosity. And that's, that's all I have.
Great. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes for the Select Board meeting held August 23rd, 2022. Second.
Second one, Ms. Canfield, further discussion, seeing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Vignani.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Good. Before we adjourn this meeting and sign documents or we're going to be going into executive session. And, um, we're going to, in this second session, discuss the strategy with respect to litigation. If an Oakley mud, it may have occurred, it would have been detrimental to the effective litigation position of the public body. And this is regarding the shellfish commercial aquaculture. So can I, do I need a motion to go into executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I have a motion?
Move the Select Board go into executive session pursuant to purpose three of the Open Meeting Law to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and I declare, oh, that's what you have to say. Do you read that? Do you have to read that?
You read that, yes, you read that.
I, okay, and I do allow an open meeting. I have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board in connection with this matter. The board will not reconvene in open session. Uh, the purpose is shellfish commercial agriculture. Second.
Second, uh, Mr. Goodrich, further discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Goodrich, I'm sorry. Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Thank you and good night.